Council meeting to order. If you -- this has to be quiet. Thank you. I'd like to call the regular council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Downing?
Here.
Mayor Protem, Carol Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Snedzinger?
Here.
Councilmember Malika?
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Carrico?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Winnicky?
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we may -- is Monica? Monica, is your -- anyone here yet? Monica? Okay, so we'll just go ahead on the agenda then and move on. All right, are there any additions or deletions from council? I'll do it. Okay, I have a couple. The first addition I have is we're going to move CR-81 up before CR-75. So that is CR-81, which is the Huron Center BLIGHT determination project commencement. Eminent domain authorization will be the first under resolutions. And then CR-76 is going to be deleted this evening. Is there anything else from any other consuls? Thank you. We don't have Safe Bill. Okay, Debbie, we have economic development.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Good evening, I should say.
Good evening. How are you?
Lost a few hours, didn't I? Couple things to report. As you're aware, we did receive the City of Northland two grants. It's actually the grant that Nura wrote, totaling $400,000. That's an EPA Brownfields Community Wide Assessment and Cleanup Program. The majority of that grant, it'll be used over the next three years, and it will be to assess, identify, and conduct environmental site assessments, develop remediation plans for selected sites, and it'll be focused on the West 104th Southwest Commercial Districts. Any questions on the grant?
Just congratulations. Great job.
Yes, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, some -- a couple company updates. Texas Roadhouse, we'd hoped they'd begun demolition, but if you went over there just in the last day or so, you'll see that it has been totally fenced around and the crane is there. So anytime that building will be coming down, with construction starting this summer and the completion later this year. SEL Community Hospital, the 60,000-square-foot hospital, construction is to begin this summer, we think probably right after July 4th. They'll start fencing it and doing a lot of other things in the meantime, but actual construction, we're kind of holding them off until after the July 4th event for part of that. One correction on my report, I had said open in late 2015, so correction 2016, my apologies. Woodley's has converted their 8,000-square-foot part of their building, 8,000 square feet of their existing showroom, to accommodate their inventory of their clearance outlet that used to be over at Tamrac. And that has closed, so they've moved that completely over here, so that will be offering discounted furniture items in addition to all of their other merchandise. So we're excited about that. And we had the grand opening celebration for Carried Bend Apartments. I think for the people that were there, they were highly impressed with all the great work that they've done over there. And they're 72 percent leased already, so that's terrific, and thank you for coming. Just a quick update on commercial real estate for quarter one 2015. Our office vacancy rates are at 10.3. That's up from 9.9 the last year in quarter one. Industrial is at .3, as we've talked about, where virtually we have no space left in industrial. That's down from 4.7 of quarter one of last year. Retail, I'm pleased to say, is down from 13.5 from last year at the same time to 8.4. So that's a good sign. We announced four new storefront businesses, two that are in Webster Lake Promenade, First Watch, and Jim &amp; Nick's, and two and four home-based businesses. Nura resolutions that we passed last month were PSA with J&amp;T Consulting for $72,765. That was for the design for community center drive infrastructure improvements. Also bling it on Beauty Salon, we gave them a grant for about $2,300 for their signage. They're over in Malle Center. And also, we did a PSA with HC Peck &amp; Associates. A couple things I did want to update on Nura. The 104th and I-25 ramps, we met with the consultants and with the board at the board meeting last month. After we evaluated the plans that we had, we budgeted $500,000 initially, and that was for the design as well as the construction. Nura has allocated an additional $100,000 so that we can expand on and enhance the landscaping and features to come down a little bit further and do a little bit more. So we will actually, at the July meeting, they're actually going to be doing 3D renderings for us, so that we can actually see the dimensions and so forth of the sites. We're also going to be leaving some room for signage at some other point. There are places that will be identified at each one of those spots. 112th and Washington are 2.5 acres for the Nura property that we have there. The scope was presented by the developer. As you know, we went out to RFP only when developers submitted. After we evaluated the proposal that they gave us, the financial gap was just too big for us at that -- at this time. So we're going to reevaluate potential development opportunities for that project. Any questions on the Nura updates? And just as I mentioned last month, the website chart, you'll see I went back to January 1, and you can see where most of our hits are coming from. And definitely, the Shop Northland directory is the one that gets the most activity.
It seems that way. I was looking at the chart.
We didn't track it before January 1, so I couldn't go back any further, so. Any other questions?
Questions, comments? Yes.
How many months out are you on the billboard now?
We've got people on there, probably six or seven, that have continuous, meaning that if there's room, they want on it. So what we try to do is always give new companies the first chance at it. If there is an open spot, then we go to them. So we could probably book it up totally, just with the people that are just continuous, that want to be on there all the time.
But you're getting a lot of new people?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
As always, you just do such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to have the Safe Bill Scholarship. So the council will join me down here, and we will be joined by Chad Johnson and -- is that the -- Chad?
Yeah, I thought it said Bill. It's our honor to present to this $1,000 Second Annual New Scholarship. So everybody's aware, Safe Bill gives a $1,000 a year scholarship. This is our second one. You have to write a 500-word essay approved by the mayor, the city manager, one of the State Building attorneys, the development director as well. And we go through the applications, and we pick the one that we feel best represents the core values. And this year's recipient is Allen Nelson.
So I have to take this to the bank, take it to the bank.
Do you want to say anything?
Well, I'd like to thank my parents, of course, but -- and there are several of my teachers and work administration here. And I think that really says a lot about Northland High School, even after you've graduated, Northland is still there to support you. They never leave your side.
And just I want to just make a note that I would like to say, thanks to Safe Bill for all they do. You know, they're so supportive of education and what they want, and they want to help your kids and communities, so thank you so much.
All right, next we have financial report. Jason? Oh, wait. I guess I -- all right, never mind. I just skipped one. Okay, next is public invited, we heard five minutes per speaker. Anyone can speak to council for up to five minutes on any subject other than the public hearing. So if you have anything you want to speak to us other than for the public hearing, please come forward. Okay? Seeing no one approach, we'll now do the -- come have the financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the April 2015 financial update. Get through this quickly, since we have some other important things to get on with. Just an update on sales and use tax. Sales and use tax is up just under 10% through April of this year. Within that, sales tax is up 8%, use tax specifically 11%. A big spike in auto use tax, there's a lot of Northland folks buying vehicles. That's up 17% of the prior year. So overall, good things happening sales tax-wise in the Northland economy, which is exciting. The general funds, the year-to-year revenues are just under $6.2 million, which is up 1.26% from the prior year. Taxes overall in the general fund are up 4%. Well, intergovernmental licenses and permits, fines and forfeitures, and charges for services are up just about 1% in total. So they're tracking, consistent with years past, as far as collections being 33% of the way through the year. So there's not really anything alarming through April revenue-wise, other than the positive things that are happening with sales tax. Expenditures in the general fund are $6.6 million. That's up 9% over the prior year. That's in line with what we had planned with the budget. We have some consulting projects and things going on that you guys are aware of. Yeah, and so each department, as you can see on page three of the report, are kind of following in line with expectations. Some of the deviations I've looked into are mostly timing-related issues. You'll see on the legislative side, expenditures are up 20%. That's just the timing of arts and humanities funding of the prior year. That didn't happen until June. And so there's a spike, but it's just based off of the timing of when we're making some payments. Is there any questions on the general fund revenues or expenditures?
Please, please.
That you guys wanted to go over?
No.
Okay. Moving on to water and wastewater. The revenue in that fund is at 3 million, with expenditure is at 3.7 million. Again, you'll see the water revenues are up almost 11%. Sewer use is up almost 9%. And you'll see at the bottom, the food tax is dedicated to debt service for construction of projects in the water and sewer fund. That's up 55% on the year with the addition of the new business selling groceries. I'll move on to the stormwater funds. Total revenues just over $100,000 and expenditures of $77,000. Rates remaining flat over time, but those revenues are expected. And the expenditures, any discrepancy is just based off of timing. Those are $77,000, which are 23% of the budget, which falls in line with where we are in this point in time of the year. Then lastly, sanitation funds. Total revenues just under $410,000 with total expenditures of $372. Again, rates are flat. You can see that, there's some discrepancy in recycling revenue, which we've seen over the past several months, dating back to last year. Just the pricing for recyclable materials is not as great as it has been the last couple of years. And then expenditure-wise, we're spending, you know, as we expect in that fund. So with that, page 10 of the report lays out the geographic areas and how they're doing in each area. And you'll see that all 14 that we list are having a positive change compared to last year at this time. So that kind of goes back to my first statement with the sales and use tax, having some positive things happen, happening in town.
All right.
That's all I've got for today.
Okay, any other questions? Comments?
Can you do this every month?
I can give a report every month. Yes. Yes, I can.
One like this?
We'll see what happens.
He doesn't commit, does he?
Thank you. Yep.
Thanks, Jason. All right, next we are moving to the consent agenda. Move to approve?
Second.
Please open the vote. The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to the public hearing. Joanna, did you want to read that?
And I believe there's an opening statement to be read for that.
There is. Okay. I will now open the public hearing on Council Resolution 81, which you've adopted would authorize the Northland Urban Renewal Authority, Nura, to use eminent domain to acquire the property owned by Impala Capital LLC within the Huron Center property, based on the existence of BLIGHT. The procedure to be followed in this matter will be as follows. City staff will give a brief outline on the purpose of the public hearing and will present evidence to council. Council will then take public testimony. Each member of the public will have three minutes to testify and may present any evidence. Council members may ask questions of the staff or any other member of the public who testifies. Cory, or who is going to present?
I think Debbie Tittle is going to present.
Good evening. Again. Good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council, I would like to first review a brief timeline on the project that we're referring to 104th and Huron Center, as the Huron Center. In October 2008, Huron Center, a BLIGHT study was performed, and nine conditions of BLIGHT were found. That was in 2008. Between 2008 and 2014, Nura explored redevelopment opportunities for the site, including working with brokers and developers, including one project in late 2011. Unfortunately, the anchor tenant chose not to do that, so the redevelopment did not occur. In May of 2014, Nura purchased the Albertson's Wright 8 Building. In September of 2014, an RFP was posted. This is a competitive bidding process that is required. October 8, 2014, a mandatory pre-bid was held. 18 people attended. 11:14, 2014, the bids were closed, the RFP bids were closed. There was two proposals that were submitted, one from Evergreen Development and one from Impala Capital. However, the Impala Capital did not meet the RFP criteria. The purpose of this public hearing tonight and the resolution CR-81 is to consider the following three main items. First, the City Council to determine if Impala Capital properties, see Exhibit A of the resolution, under Colorado Urban Renewal Law, meets at least five BLIGHT factors. I would ask that you go to my admin memo and attachment two. I would ask you to please review the opinion letter from Rickard Cunningham that has confirmed that 11 eligible factors are present today. Please make this a part of the public record, which is the opinion letter attachment two. Number two, the second thing, is City Council to determine if the project for which the property will be acquired will commence within seven years of the BLIGHT determination. Number three, if City Council makes the findings on the first and second items that I just talked about, then council may authorize, one, Nura to use eminent domain to acquire the Impala Capital properties, and two, to transfer it to a private party for redevelopment purposes.
Any questions? Anything that you would like to add? Kim?
Debbie, when did the Albertson's Wright 8 vacate?
2006. Thank you. Any other questions of Debbie? Can we call her back up? Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. We will now take public testimony. So whoever wishes to speak to council, you can speak to a council for up to three minutes on this subject. Should we take names also, Cory?
They can simply sign in at the podium. The signup sheet is there. And then absolutely get their name and identifying information.
So as you come up to speak to council, we need you to put your name on the sign-in sheet, and also tell us who you are, and also your address. So whoever wants to start or approach council? Okay, you have up to three minutes.
My name is Tyler Carlson. Address is 1873 South Belair Street, Suite 1106, Denver. I am a representative of Evergreen Development, who is working with the city on its potential redevelopment of the Huron Center. And as you guys know, we have a lot of history with the property. We were the developer who tried to redevelop it several years ago, and were left at the altar without an anchor tenant, which was a big disappointment for all of us. We were the ones who were awarded the RFP earlier this year, and we're under what the city agreement calls a feasibility period. And I'm really here to answer any questions that you all may have. You know, we do have a plan for the property. I think you guys have probably seen that. That was in our original proposal. We're really excited about the opportunity, because, you know, A, the market is much better than it was several years ago, but B, some of the fundamental, you know, strengths of the Huron Center are still there. You know, it's still an underserved area in the city. We still believe it's got a -- it's a great neighborhood that will support, you know, additional retail. We also believe that our plan allows us to, I think, resolve some functional obsolescence that's really challenged the center historically. And I do, I know there's a big contingent of neighbors and of tenants here tonight. And as I related to one of the tenant's attorneys already, you know, it's always Evergreen's policy to engage existing tenants whenever we're going through a redevelopment. And it's our foremost goal to keep existing businesses, you know, who want to stay in the center. You know, it's, you're finding a new tenant's not easy, and if there's a tenant in place, believe me, it saves a lot of brain damage for everyone. You know, obviously, you know, with our redevelopment of the center is pretty comprehensive, so there will be a time period when it will be difficult to operate a business, because there'll be, you know, revamps of the parking lot and architectural enhancements and demolition and things going on. And we're going to be as sensitive to that as we can in terms of phasing those improvements. But, and we'll maybe making substantial investments. So anyways, I just wanted to, you know, let everyone know that I am here representing the Evergreen, happy to answer any questions, happy to engage, you know, any of the tenants throughout the process, and glad to be back working in Northland again.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Good evening.
Good evening.
Please sign in, Antonio.
Sign in.
Yeah.
Please print, sign. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Antonio Escobell. I reside at 9740 Melody Drive. I'm a resident of Northland and a resident of Ward 4. I'm here as a private citizen to speak in favor of eminent domain. Two years ago, I ran for City Council, and I walked the entire ward. I talked to as many people as I could speak to. The number-one concern was the Huron Center. Most of the folks felt like it was an eyesore and a black eye to the community. I believe that the property owners of Huron Center have failed to act responsibly, and I'm here to ask council to act responsibly and correct the problem, however that's possible. But keeping in mind that your responsibility is to the citizenry of Northland, not to the property owner who doesn't reside in Northland. I thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next? Anyone else?
Hi. I wasn't --
Please sign in.
Sign in.
And then give us your name.
My name is Kristen Potmussel. I am a worker as well as a Northland resident. As many of you know, Northland is a really wonderful city. My family goes back here generations. My grandmother's house is less than a mile from here. I have a home here. I have four children as well. I want my children to see that people can still continue to have small businesses, that their dreams can be realized, and they can't just be taken away. This is very important to me. I had five, six aunts and uncles who all went to Northland High School. My entire family is Northland-based, and I beg and plead that you allow my children to continue to have their dreams, that their property, their belongings, the things that they have worked hard for, invested their lives, themselves, and their money, that they can keep that. Thank you.
I have a question. You said you were a worker. Can you tell me what business you were working for?
I do work at Natural Selections up in the Huron Center. I also live about four blocks away, so.
Thank you.
It's very nice. Thank you.
Next? Good evening.
Try this again.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Doug Whitland. I'm an attorney in town representing Impala Capital, who owns about half of this Huron Center shopping center. Your BLIGHT determination that you're doing tonight's a tough, tough call. This is based on a 2008 study, right on the edge of a seven-year limitations under the statute. So you did an update to that BLIGHT study, but if you look at that BLIGHT study update, all it does is rubber stamp that previous BLIGHT study of seven years back. It doesn't tie any specific conditions to any specific property. So here I am with my client, sitting here saying, "Well, I'm not sure what BLIGHT conditions apply to your property or to the Albertson's store. There's no way you can tell from that study." Typically, what you do is have testimony, go through in detail where these BLIGHT conditions exist, what properties they pertain to, and know where all this actually sits. We can't tell that at all from this study. And part of the problem is that Northland's owned the Albertson's Center now for over a year and has done nothing with it. Many of those BLIGHT conditions that you see in that new updated report are on the Albertson's property owned by Nura. So to bootstrap a condemnation of BLIGHT determination upon those conditions that may be Nura's own conditions, maybe even solely Nura's conditions, isn't fair. So we think the council should rethink this determination of BLIGHT and hold against it. Much more detailed study would be needed. And you'll hear from the owner of Impala Capital, Mike Zhang, right now, that'll tell you. They're willing to work with the redeveloper and get this thing going themselves. Thanks a lot for your consideration.
Thank you. Oh, yes. Excuse me. We have a question.
How long has Impala owned the property?
So in half a year.
So maybe I'll wait, but my question would be, in two and a half years, what have you done to improve it?
Yes, great. I will answer that.
Thank you.
And remember, through the whole thing, you had 2008 BLIGHT study. When you have a BLIGHT study, owners know about it, buyers know about it, tenants know about it. It's tough to improve a property with that file. Thanks.
Please sign in.
Yes, my name is --
So my name is Mike Zhang. I represent Impala Capital LLC. We acquired the property two, um, half-years ago. And at that time, the light is totally dark. I mean, at nighttime, the light is totally dark. There's no tenants in there. And we came in, we worked really hard, we fixed the, fixed the property. And at that time, there's three tenants. Right now, we have sixteen tenants. And we, we fix what we can fix. We bringing the business to the Northland. We trust Northland. And it's, it's great that at the beginning of the meeting, it's supposed to be justice to all. And I, I like that. You know, every, it's supposed to be a fair business. We came in here, we spent all our time, all our effort. I told to, actually to the city manager, all the, at the meeting too. My cell phone is available to my tenants twenty-four seven and to get the business to this shopping center. Okay? So, but anyhow, I'm going through the slide. You have the slide presentation in front of you as well. So the first of all is I, we meant to keep this, we meant to upkeep this place, this property for many years to come. We put all our effort in here, but now they want to condemn. They want to have our property. We make it available to them. We cooperate to them. At the beginning, we told to them, I say, we supposed to fix this place. We work together to fix this place. Okay? So now, they say, okay, I want your property. I say, fine, you want to take my property, you pay me a fair price. Okay? But so far, the, you look at the second slide, here, if you look at the slides, at ten fifty, the property, only seven, seven thousand square footage, is two point two million dollar on the market. So far, the offer we get, we have forty-three thousand square footage of a property. The offer we get is one million dollar from Evergreen Development, one point eight million dollar from Nura. We do a market study.
You have one minute. You have one minute.
Our property is worth nine point eight five million dollars.
How much was that?
Nine point eight five million dollars.
And mayor, mayor, since this is the property owner, you may certainly exercise your discretion and allow him to speak for longer than three minutes if you wish.
Thank you.
If you can look at another slide presentation, Hugh Crest Plaza, we have five.
Excuse me one moment.
Sorry. How did you come to the nine point eight five million?
Well, if you look at the, another slide, then right next to the Hugh Crest Plaza, down here, I have a market, I have a price comparison down here. If Hugh Crest Plaza is asking for five point two five million dollars, the asking price is one hundred and fifty-three dollar per square footage. For the ten fifty West one oh fourth Avenue, the price per square footage is more than three hundred dollars. We asking for little bit over two hundred dollars per square footage.
Excuse me, do you have an actual appraisal report from an appraiser instead of just this information that's?
We did consult with the real estate company, and they did some study for us. And then this, this is the reasonable price, this is the fair market price for our property.
I, I'm in the same line. Do you have an actual appraisal though?
We have, we consult with real estate, real estate company, many real estate company. We consult them, say, if we sell this property, how much we can sell for this property.
Sure. It's a yes or no question. Do you, do you have a real estate, do you have an appraisal of the property?
We do not have appraisal at this time.
Okay. I'm going to let you speak just a little bit longer, even though your three minutes are up, but just two more minutes, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So Impala is committed to eliminate blight with Nura. At the beginning, basically blight, we are experienced developer. We have ten project right now, because we have, we have project in different locations. And wherever we go, the city, the local authority, they welcome us. The reason is because we identify, this is the building we can fix, and we put all our effort and strength to fix it. Now, blight is usually associated with empty building. There's no tenants there. If no tenant in there, people, the property will not be taken care of. People will go down there, do the graffiti, do the crime, all sort of stuff. And the, the thing for us, the first priority is fill up the shopping center. And we did that. We, from twenty percent, three tenant that was there when we take off all, we increased to eighty-nine percent of the occupancy. We, we moving fourteen, fourteen tenant in two and a half year. You know, for developer, it's very difficult to move the tenant into a shopping center without the anchor space. It's so difficult. But at this time, when we try to move more tenant in there, they come to the city, city defuse, decline them. They say, no. So it's, it's getting in a way that we try to make this shopping center, revitalize this shopping center, but it come to this stage, they just want to take our building.
Can you, can you give an example of that, of who, who the city has, has turned down from, from being in, in your shopping center or being one of your tenants?
Right. Lately, this tenant calling us, they interesting our property. We say, you talk to Nura, say whether it's okay to have this, have your business to here. They, they was told us, they say, they calling in, they say, the business turned down because this shopping center, they will, they will take the shopping center. So they say, if you come in here, the business will be gone.
I don't understand that at all.
For the tenant calling to here, they say, okay, the, the city gonna acquire this property. So they refuse to allow the business to come in. And we, we do have tenant to acquire, I mean, to living, we have two, two empty space only. And we have people constantly calling. We answer them, we try to get them in here, but we cannot.
Okay, your time is up.
Can I ask one question, mayor?
Yes, you can.
What year did you purchase the property?
At the end of, at the end of the year two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve. And how much did you purchase the property for?
Uh, we, we don't want to disclose what price we.
Cory, can I ask a question of you regarding this?
Yes, ma'am.
When tenants sign leases and they're moving into a space, does there have to be a clause that says, in case eminent domain occurs, that they're fully aware of, like, that they signed to some kind of terms? They agree to some kind of terms or agreement should that occur on that property?
There's no requirement under the law that such a clause exists. Typically, leases in, in retail centers do have a condemnation clause that identifies what happens in the event of condemnation.
Can I ask if you have that clause in your leases?
Yes, we do. We, we do, there's a condemnation clause on lease agreement. But according to your website or according to the law, as we understand, you should not, you should have the tenant to move in, no matter until the time they condemn the property. Because the, our purpose is move the tenant in to revitalize this shopping center. It's not like, we don't want to see it's a deteriorated. And we are, we express numerous time to, to Nura, saying that, okay, whatever proposal, we can work together. And clearly, there's a two proposal. And for purpose, like, the development proposal B doesn't even require our building. And, and for the proposal.
We just want you to answer the question and not go into anything else. Okay? All right. Thank you very much.
Same here.
All right. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to council for three minutes? Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Shelley Spalding, and I live at thirteen thirty.
Please sign in.
West one hundred and second place.
Thank you.
I have lived there since nineteen ninety-nine and would like to voice my support for the eminent domain. To my knowledge, there is only one tenant that has been there since I have lived there. And the shopping center has continued to just run down in that time, so I would like to support the eminent domain resolution.
Thank you.
You can leave the notebook somewhere else, mayor, so that people can sign in while they're waiting to speak.
We can. Is there somewhere else we can have the notebook so they could sign in as we're moving? And then you can sign in as, as the person is speaking. Thank you.
So, so mayor, if you want folks to line up here so that they can sign in and then?
Yes, that would be probably a little faster. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chris Priddy, and I own a laundromat at Huron Plaza. And we moved in just in December, so we haven't been there for very long. And I just want to support the landlords because they do take care of the place. I mean, I've never seen a landlord that comes by and cleans and sweeps the outside. They're always trying to make the place a nice place. And in just six months, our revenue has doubled. And so I only can think that as more people know that we're there, that we will get more business. And so I really would love to stay there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hello, I'm Carrie Glenn. I have been a resident of the city of Northland for forty years. I've also worked in the city of Northland for the last twenty-six years at Northland High School. And council, I could not be more pleased to see exactly what Nura's been doing at numerous properties inside the city. And also, watching the deterioration of the Huron Center over the course of my life has been aggravating. It is a property that I drive past every day, and it's a property that I actually used to visit on just about a daily basis as well, when we did have the grocery store there as well as the Skaggs and Osco and Rite Aid and all the different types of stores that we used to have there, restaurants and everything else. I am really excited to see what could be done on that property. And I really would like to encourage you to do what you can in order to be able to revitalize it, not only for the sake of the residents, but also for our student population that does walk past that site on a regular basis, and parents are there as well. So anything that we can do just to be able to revitalize that, that corner would be highly encouraged. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Next? Why not? All right. Just put it, I just handed it to you and we'll pass it by.
My name is Trevor Cody. I am a local resident. I'm Colorado native, and I happen to work in the area as well. I am also a recent graduate from Metro State University, so I'm a fresh college graduate. And I have a job. It's really nice. I do have to say, we stand before you not as enemies squared off across the battlefield, but because we both ultimately want the same thing, a well-established and more functional Huron Center. However, using the power of eminent domain is not only a terrible choice for businesses, but also a terrible choice for the city of Northland. We believe the current ownership and tenants can work together with Nura to improve the center, and we're just asking for a reasonable chance to do that. Please let us work with you instead of against you in attaining a mutually desired goal. Eminent domain laws were designed to allow governments to acquire property for public works like light rails, highways, public buildings, even schools and hospitals. The eradication of blight is a public purpose, but blight destinations are supposed to be for extreme cases such as tenements and slums and crack houses or other business scenarios. I stand to you as somebody that is proud to be in the center, to work, to be able to support myself, to be able to support my family. I do this job because these are my patients and these are my friends. I do this not only because it helps myself and it helps others, but it does help my community. I do see what it does. I have lived in this general area. I have been a part of Adams County. I have been a part of Northland. I have seen all of it. I've broken my arm and fallen in that lake. It's fun. I've been here. I've seen it. I have seen the blight and I have seen the destruction that has happened with Albertsons. But I see an opportunity. And I see an opportunity for us to all come together, not distance ourselves. So with that in mind, we must keep together the success that we have going for us.
You have one minute.
As well as the success of others. We've just started. We've got this license for here and we wish to help. We are Northland. I am Northland. These people here are Northland. What are we doing? Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign in? Okay. What is your name?
My name is Shayla Crum. I am here to discuss the problem involving, involving eminent domain and the Huron Center on one hundred and fourth Avenue and Huron Street. This particular area has been declared by Nura to be blighted. The center is far from blighted. The Huron Center alone supports fifteen successful independent businesses who have invested themselves in this area. This space is full of people, both customers and business owners. But Nura has decided to use eminent domain to gain this property. There are two choices being presented, building around the building or take the building involuntarily by force. Is this the kind of world our youths are going to grow up in? Taking land just because we want it? I know I do not want to grow up in a world like that. Taking private land in use from business owners because this area is blighted. But is that really the case? I represent the youth of all Northland as a resident here. Thank you.
Are you a resident of Northland?
Yes.
My name is Brett Rogers, and I work at Seven Ten Pipes. I want to thank everyone who came out today, show support. I want to thank the city council for allowing this to happen.
I'm sorry, where do you work?
Seven Ten Pipes, in the shopping center.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Eminent domain laws usually are supposed to be about absolute last resort, as far as I understand them and how they can be used effectively. Despite how this scenario may have been presented to you, this is not a last resort scenario. There have been several position, potential tenants interested in Albertson's building. There was a tactical law enforcement training business that wanted to use it. There was a thrift store that there's, they're down the street, they wanted to expand into there. There was a fitness center, just like the one now proposed. Nura denied these businesses an opportunity to occupy the Albertsons based on outdated covenants on the property. Several businesses have also been interested in renting the pad building right next to the tamale kitchen and have been denied the opportunity to do so as well. Some were strongly advised against it due to Nura's plan to condemn the property. Others were told their business models were not allowed due to the covenants of the shopping center. These covenants could easily be lifted if Nura and Impala both signed off on it, and Impala would love to remove the covenants because it would just raise the value of the property. Nura has not made any attempt to remove or modify the covenants to allow the lease anchor space at the, or to allow it to lease the anchor space at the center and make it easier for Impala to lease the retail space in the wings and pad sites. This has resulted in the continuous vacancy of Albertson's building owned by the city. That is the main reason why the center has not had higher occupancy rates in the last several years.
You have one minute.
Thank you. We urge you to please consider directing Nura to pursue these options before concluding that there is no choice but to take Impala's property and our businesses from us by unnecessarily resorting to eminent domain. And on a more personal level, like, like it's already been said, these are my family members, these are the people I work with, these are my neighbors. We just love what we do and we love where we are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next?
I did sign in.
All right.
My name is Noel Coley. I work with Natural Selections. We've only been open for a few short months. I'm the store manager at Natural Selections. I've been with this company since day one. I can't tell you how much heart I've put into this place. I've been in the cannabis, cannabis industry for years now as a manager for multiple locations. And I've never seen the amount of positive feedback as I do from Natural Selections. We're a very well put-together place and a very comfortable place for people to come. We're very proud of what we've done in, in Northland here for what we had to work with pretty much. We, pretty much not only us, but our feedback is huge. People say that it's a blight, but once you put something beautiful in it, it's amazing the feedback you get. Our store is gorgeous. I wish I had pictures to show you, the few that hasn't seen it. And the reaction we get from people is outrageous. Um, and the reaction we get from people is outrageous, and they love it, and it just goes to show how much putting something in, you know, or doing just a simple facelift on something can make such a big difference. Um, we, there are thirteen businesses that are creating tons of jobs and sales tax revenue for the city in Northland. We're more than willing to work with the city and do a facelift on the east and the west wing to match the new development that is to be done in the old Albertson's that's been vacant for eight years. We understand the proposal for the redevelopment submitted by Impala was deemed insufficient. However, surely you can acknowledge that the language barrier between Nura and Impala, some of the small business owners may have had something to do with this. Um, with that being said, it would only seem right that the owner and the tenants of a building would be given a second opportunity to submit a redevelopment proposal if their first one was not sufficient or up to their standards. Um, instead, Nura moved right away and awarded the job of the master redevelopment developer to Evergreen and worked with them in executive sessions to determine what they wanted to do with this property. Please allow us to stay in this place, in this place that you granted us license only a few short months ago. Um, it, it just means so much to you, to us. I can't even explain it to you guys. As you all know, our license is specific to Northland. We can't just up and move anywhere. We can't just go anywhere. There's not, and as, as you guys know, there, Northland is a very small, small city as well, you know, there's not, just, you can't just go anywhere, you know, and just move anywhere. Um, so it's, it's just, it's very upsetting for us to think that, you know, just a few short months ago, we were granted a license, and now it's just gonna be, now we have no place to put it. And that's really the main, the main problem for us. Um, like I said, we really just want to work with the new development. Everybody wants it to be new, and we, we want it to be better. We want it to be better looking, but we want to work with you instead of taking everybody's business and taking it away. And I just think it can be, a lot more could be done than, um, like the gentleman said before, is trying to find a bunch of new tenants and everything like that. You have tenants that want to stay, that want to be here. They don't want to leave. And it's a matter of doing a facelift to match the exteriors in the end after you get, um, the anchor to put in a business there.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Brandon Thanks. I'm an operations manager over at Natural Selections. I've been a friend and colleague of Aiden for over five years, and we both entered this exciting industry. Uh, now needless to say, this road has been through ups and downs, and this is just the latest hurdle on our path. As you all know, our store's been open for just three months. Um, I had the opportunity to meet many of you guys at our ribbon cutting just last week. We strive to create an inviting, professional and upscale environment, and I think we succeeded. Now, behind the scenes, what you guys have not been able to see is our ground for structure. We have two state-of-the-art growth facilities totaling over thirteen thousand square feet. These girls employ fif, five part-time employees, over twenty part-time trimmers, not to mention the four thousand plants that we have to cultivate that require constant maintenance and attention. Uh, as you require, as, as you imagine, this required a significant investment, if not only time and capital. This investment that we made was worth your blessing. When we opened our store here in Northland, it required us to have these growth facilities. If we have to close and shut these growth facilities down, it means not only the jobs at our shop, it means the jobs at our growth facilities as well, since they're all, all tied together. If the city decides to use eminent domain, there's no guarantees for our business. The Waddy Cities severance package is structured. These businesses are offered a, a negligible amount of money compared to the amounts that we've all respectively invested in our stores. The relocation fees, the compensation for business loss, not to mention all of the time and hard work that we've all put in. Now, if we had some guarantees in place, we might not feel as strong on it, but as it stands, we're not able to sleep at night. It really does feel like a David and Goliath situation.
You have one minute.
No problem. Now, the misuse of eminent domain laws has lately become a disturbing trend here in Colorado, and you guys have this chance to stand up here and right now. Let's set a precedent for other towns and villages that may be facing similar circumstances. The city website itself describes Northland as a mecca for small business and entrepreneurs. You pride yourselves on your vibrant pro-business community. I encourage the council to please stick to these values. You've already laid them out. Make your stance known. Support small business, encourage our growth, and vote no to eminent domain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I just wanted to clarify with you that your growth facilities are not located in Northland, is that correct?
They are not located in Northland, however, our state license requires them to be outside of there. So if we lose our Northland license-
Thank you.
Thank you. That, no, was fine. All right.
Hi. My name is Isadora Metzner. I'm from Atlanta, Georgia. Eight years ago, I met Aiden O'Donovan while visiting my daughter at Washi, Washington University in St. Louis. Um, I have, I've had the opportunity to live the American dream. I started a business with very little, built it up. We had as many as a thousand employees in nine distribution locations around the country. You know, we sold out to a private equity group in two thousand and eleven. Um, I'm also a lender for, one of the lenders and a mentor for the big folks at Natural Selections. Uh, we understand the frustrations Nura may feel with the current landlord. However, please understand that all of us, tenants, the landlord, Nura, and residents alike, want the same thing, which is a prettier Huron Center with a successful anchored tenant. As much as it may not seem like it, Impala seems willing to work hand-in-hand with Nura to improve the wings, then Nura can work with the developer if necessary to improve and secure an anchored tenant for the Albertson's space. Unfortunately, Nura has chosen to pursue Plan A over Plan B. Uh, I think some sheets were handed out to you previously. Uh, if eminent domain is authorized tonight, Nura will move forward with Plan A and all of our leases will become null and void. As of right now, Nura is pursuing Plan A over Plan B for reasons that have not been fully disclosed or explained to us. Whenever we intend to inquire about why Plan A was chosen, even though Plan B is a much quicker mutually beneficial option, we are not given a straight answer. So far, we have been able to deduce is that it has something to do with drainage. All of the meetings regarding this matter are an executive session behind closed doors.
You have one meeting.
Please let us work with Impala, with the city, to match the design of the wings with whatever they choose for the center, as well as work together on issues that they may see in our way. We are more than willing to work with you guys on these issues, but up until now have not been given the opportunity to do so. Furthermore, Evergreen, the chosen master developer, has letters of intent from a discount grocery store in Jim and is more than happy to move forward with Plan B. If council deems that as their wishes, I urge you please vote no tonight so that we can pursue Plan B together and everyone can win. Please ask yourself, who loses if Plan B is authorized over Plan A? Let's move forward together and open a dialogue on how we all can work in harmony. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Andrea Aragon, and I represent the laundry spot. And I would just like to say that we, um, for a longer map, definitely raised the bar. We, I believe myself, as well as my fellow business owners at the Huron Center, I think we all have raised our glass to above the standard of running our businesses, and we really did, you know, looked into this Northland and investing our business there. We have invested up to a hundred thousand dollars in our space. Um, if we were to lose that, we would be out. I, no one will reimburse that for us. Uh, I believe we provide a service for the community, even the surrounding communities. I have people coming from Brumfield to, um, from, turned out off at Ninety Second, Seventy Second. So we're bringing people to Northland, and so I think that we're a value, very valuable business in the area, and we are not a blight business, which some in the past may have been, but, um, I also would just like to say that I would like to expand my business in Northland. Um, I, there's some discussion that the business next to me may be moving out. I'd like to expand my store. My store is very small currently. I even at one time had approached Kevin to buy the, where the hookup business was, um, because I thought that would be a great size, twenty-five hundred square feet roughly, would accommodate a nice-sized laundry that's needed in this area. And, um, on pursuing that, I was highly discouraged from doing so, and I said, "Well, I, I'm just gonna buy it." And I was also highly discouraged, "You just don't buy it." I said, "Well, how can I not buy it for a business in America? I'm in America. Why can't I do that?" At what point, I then was threatened with the fact that they would enforce eminent domain. So I felt very threatened. I thought, you know, if that is the last recourse to any part of the process of trying to redevelop an area, it didn't seem that it would be the last recourse. It seemed like it was very much at the forefront, and therefore I just didn't pursue it any further and just kept to our smaller space, but-
So who threatened you? Who specifically threatened you?
Debbie Tuttle.
Debbie, she threatened you?
With eminent domain. And then on another occasion-
Or did she tell you that it's the possibility?
There was that, because I was very adamant, "How can you in America take the property from an American?" And that's what she says. "We'll be forced to use our exercise, our forces, eminent domain." And then there was a second incident with my business partner, Chris, with whom you came up here a moment ago, and we just recently got our occupancy, our certificate of occupancy as well. And at that point, uh, Chris was speaking also to Debbie Tuttle, and basically Debbie told her that she were gonna condemn the bus, buildings over there, and she said, "How can you condemn a building that you just gave us a safety?" You know, we approved, went through all the process of inspections and got a certificate of occupation. So Chris basically said, "You're gonna owe us." And Debbie Tuttle says, "We don't owe you anything." And that was the conversation. So as a business owner, I don't feel comfortable with what's gonna happen. We, I feel that we've been very much left in the dark. Uh, we haven't really been forthcoming with information to us, especially as people coming to apply for, you know, uh, plans, um, they have to go through the city. If there's some, I believe that if there was some intention of doing this, this should have been made known when we were making our applications for, for a building permit, because we only opened in December, and we've been here six months. Our business is priest, we're over fifty percent growing. I mean, it doesn't seem like a lot, but in a way it is a lot, so-
So you were, you were never told you were in an urban renewal area?
I was never told I was in urban renewal.
And was that by your owner?
That was by anybody. It wasn't until after I moved in, I got a, oh, by the way, email-
May I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
Did you come to the city and ask, or get a permit or anything, and in the conversation asked that? Or was that a lease that you were, that you just dealt with, your landlord?
We, um, our landlord, I don't recall that I needed to look at it prior to coming, I don't recall condemnation-
So it's not the city that said, "No, you weren't in urban renewal." It was, it was no one said it?
No one said it. It was never made transparent to us. If I had known, I would not have invested the money in that space as I have, because it's not an easy task, believe me.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So you signed a lease. How long, how long was your lease for?
I have a lease for three years with auctions, three-year auctions.
And when you signed your lease, you had no idea you were in the urban renewal boundaries?
I did not know. I was not notified.
Anyone who's a tenant in there, I'm gonna ask the same question. Did you know when you moved in there, were you in urban renewal boundaries? Did your landlord mention that to you?
Um, after the fact, after we had moved in, we got a, oh, by the way, email, "Do your due diligence."
From who?
Oh, by the way, from who?
From our landlord.
From the landlord.
From the landlord. Yeah, that should have been a wake-up call right there.
Well, it was, and therefore we started investigating, and therefore we found this out. By then, we've invested the money, we've opened our doors, we got our CEO.
I get it, I get it.
Right.
So, thank you for your time, so-
Thank you.
Please.
Marcy? Ms. Aragon?
No, I'm fine. I finished my question.
Oh, okay. All right.
We got it.
You got it?
We got it. Okay. All right, any other questions? No. All right, next?
Hi. My name is Tyler Vines. I'm the general manager at Natural Selections. Uh, I've been working with these guys for the, for years, trying to work on getting a store, and it was always the dream of ours to do that. Uh, we've spent countless hours to make sure we're a hundred percent compliant and up to code and everything, uh, to get our store up. Uh, right now, we're passing around a petition for you guys' records. Uh, we've collected over two thousand signatures, almost entirely from residents of the city of Northland, uh, opposing the condemnation of the, uh, center and opposing the adoption of Evergreen's Plan A, which destroys the east retail wing of the center and several small businesses to, that Northland citizens see as an asset to them and to the city. So we are urging the city council to work cooperatively with Impala and the tenants of the center. Uh, we, as soon as we heard, um, that the words imminent domain, uh, used in the same sentence as our center, uh, we started this process. We had canvassers going out door-to-door. We had petitions in all of our stores. And whenever anybody talked to the city about it, it was framed as potential redevelopment. Uh, since we have long-term leases and Impala has made it clear to us that they were not selling, we figured we were in the clear. Uh, this, the very first time we heard the words, uh, imminent domain being used, uh, less than a week ago, and in a mere four business days, we were able to garner the signatures in support of almost twenty percent of the registered voters in the city. Of course, we wish more people were here, uh, and able to be here tonight. Uh, however, given the short notice, it's kinda difficult, but I'd say we did pretty good. Um, with even just a few weeks' notice, we're confident we could have gotten five times the support.
You have one minute.
Sure. Uh, almost every single person we've talked to, um, has opposed eminent domain. While many said they would really like to see an anchored tenant in the Huron Center, all agree that it was unpatriotic to do so at the expense of existing small businesses there. If there had been more transparency and public awareness of the fact that, uh, eminent domain was possibly going to be used, there would be undoubtedly far more outrage. Uh, you may be thinking to yourself, "Oh, well, this just represents one side of the story. I've gotten loads of phone calls and emails from residents that wanna do something with the Huron Center." And while that may be true, please ask yourselves if you would be getting those same phone calls if Plan B was implemented. I highly doubt you would. Um, if, if, uh, Nura and Evergreen put an anchored tenant in the Albertsons and worked with us to make our wings prettier and match the center, those calls would cease immediately. Please do the right thing. A yes vote tonight takes all of the power out of your hands and gives it entirely to Nura to do as they see fit with no little, or little to no public.
Okay. Thank you. All right, is there any questions? Okay. Thank you. Next?
Good evening. I'm Cherry Blunt. I'm the principal at Northland High School. I've also been a resident of Northland for forty-four years, and I was a previous small business owner myself. I'm here to urge you to exercise your right tonight to the eminent domain. Four short years ago at Northland High School, we had fifteen hundred students, and we sat in our little theater and had parents come to us begging our school district to change the boundaries because they did not want their child to go to Northland High School. They were threatening moving outside of the city. I will tell you now, at the end of the two thousand and fifteen school year, going into the fifteen, sixteen school year, we will now be the second-largest high school in Adams Twelve. We will have over two thousand students at our building. We have over a hundred and fifty staff members on staff, and I think that our school would be one hundred percent behind you in this redevelopment process. Our students have worked very closely with the city of Northland in many of the projects that you've done, and they have themselves presented different ideas, um, on this topic, and even three years ago brought up eminent domain in one of their Project Citizen presentations. I will tell you that historically, there was a swimming pool inside of Northland. We did make that decision to revitalize that area, turn it into fantastic classrooms, and I would urge you guys to use that as part of your thought process, because I can assure you that redeveloping our Northland High School swimming pool has done leaps and bounds for the education that we're able to provide our students. So just like we had the courage four years ago to make a drastic change at Northland High School, I'm urging you to have the courage to make this change at the Huron Center. Historically, the parents who come to our school, and they'll shop schools, so parents of kindergarteners are shopping high schools. One of the constant themes that they do have, in addition to test scores, is the questions about the, the Albertson Shopping Center. I will tell you that if you are able to provide a good resource for our students to go to, they will shop there. They frequent McDonald's and Taco Bell, and I, I urge you to give them that good opportunity for them to become consumers in that area as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do in North Glen, too. You're doing great things.
Next, thank you.
Hello, my name's Russ Cowan, I'm the owner of Seven Ten Pipes at the shopping center. If you don't mind, I'll pass these out.
I think we, we have those already?
Yeah, okay. They just basically illustrate Plan A and Plan B. I'm here today to ask you to vote no. Please don't give the power of eminent domain to Nora. I feel like this is an improper means to an end. Everybody here, everybody that spoke and everybody that probably will speak wants to see the Huron Center redeveloped properly. It doesn't look it now, it needs a half a million dollar parking lot. But when you look at the pictures, this doesn't wipe out the center. I mean, either Plan A or Plan B does a facelift. The only difference is whether or not the east wing is wiped out. Given the significant amount of tax base that's there, it just doesn't seem financially responsible. With the wildly swinging estimates on the property value, it's a big unknown, and we don't know how much it's going to cost. My comments today, I'd like to split up into three parts. The first part being eminent domain, and originally eminent domain laws are intended to use only in cases of jurisdictions needing land for public use. Everyone understands the highways, the light rails, and those situations. Many North Glen residents and business owners all support that. In this case, property conditions are the attempted statutory pathway to condemnation and eventual transfer to private entities. This is by far the more controversial use of power. This is further complicated by the fact that you would be essentially judging your own property. The Nora-owned Albertson's building has sat vacant and neglected for years, as an empty anchor tenant has played a major part in the conditions at the center. People ask, has the city done everything possible? Forcibly taking the occupied, tax-paying property from private ownership and giving it to a private developer is not going to be a popular option. It costs will be, it's costly, enormous, and not fully known right now. My second part would be about the businesses. Giving this power to Nora would eventually result in the displacement over a dozen small businesses, most of which are female minority-owned in favor of larger corporate chains. Please do everything in your power to protect the people who have risked everything to make investments in this great city. Right now, not all of the businesses can be relocated to comparable areas. Even if they were, they cannot be fully compensated for the money they would lose. Millions of dollars have been invested by the tenants.
You have one minute.
This would also send a horrible message to prospective businesses in other urban renewal areas, whether or not they want to make an investment in something that could be potentially taken away from them within a year. I'll skip a good section of mine. I'd also like to say, we haven't really been given an opportunity to speak our minds. This is the first time. We just found out about this recently, we're only fully briefed on Wednesday. And we'd really like to work together with the city as opposed to just being essentially wiped out. My third point would be, since Wednesday, we've collected over 15, almost 1,500 signatures. About half of those, 696, are from North Glen residents. And as I'm sure you're more aware than anybody, not everybody's willing to come out for a meeting. Most people would rather...
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do. So Russ, real quick, how long's your lease for?
My lease is up in about a year. I was not able, I've tried multiple times to renew my lease, but it seems like my landlord is waiting until this process is over.
Were you aware of it when you moved in, if you were in the urban boundaries?
I was not. I was made aware when Nora placed the large five-foot sign out in front of the Albertsons on 104th. That's when I started digging deeper, and I knew nothing about urban renewal 12 months ago. Now, it's fascinatingly frustrating.
And one, real quick scenario, I've heard this a number of times, that the tenants want to work and improve themselves, and knowing that's going to cost money and stuff, and if you had your landlord do it, or Nura does it, that right now, your rent is probably below market rate. Are you willing to pay more?
I, my rent started at $1,200. I have about $1,250 square feet, so, you know, $12 a square foot a year is very reasonable. My last business was in Orlando in the hospitality industry, so I saw $30, $40, $50 a square foot. My current rent is at $1,500 a month, because it includes the $300 CAM. And if you went with a Plan B, I'd be willing to go up to $2,000, $2,500, potentially $3,000.
And I'm not coming up with that either, I'm just putting that point out there, that, you know, if you improve the areas, it's going to cost someone money.
Absolutely, and I understand there's a cost, and I believe our landlord understands the cost. You probably, you guys probably know more than anybody else that there's going to be a cost to it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Rob Marsh, I'm a private attorney engaged by Mr. Cowan on behalf of Seven Ten Pipes. You've heard a lot of testimony tonight from the members of this community and the business owners, and I can't speak any more eloquently or directly to all of the practical reasons why they oppose the exercise of eminent domain in this particular circumstance. What I can do is potentially speak to the legal exercise of that power. It seems to have been a foregone conclusion that this council, sitting tonight, has the authority to authorize Nora to exercise eminent domain. Respectfully, I'd suggest to all of you that you need to consider that very carefully. Colorado law is not designed to expand or allow proliferation of eminent domain. To the contrary, both the urban renewal law and the eminent domain statutes are expressed that they're designed to restrict or limit the uses of eminent domain. The eminent domain statute in fact says, and I quote, "The taking of private property for transfer to a private entity for the purposes of economic development is not a public use for which eminent domain is appropriate." The eminent domain statute in fact says, and I quote, "The taking of private property for transfer to a private entity for the purposes of economic development is not a public use for which eminent domain is appropriate." More importantly perhaps, the factual record before this council tonight is, in my opinion, inadequate. The reason for that is because the urban renewal law requires that you make a finding in cases like this, where you have multiple parcels, some of which the owner refuses to sell in a private transfer, that this council find that the urban renewal project relative to the remaining parcels is not viable, absent a condemnation of each individual parcel. Now, I have seen what you've been provided in your legislative packet, I've talked to most of the tenants, I attended the tenant informationals meeting with Debbie Tuttle, and nowhere have I ever seen that determination. That you must take the east wing, or the west wing, or the pad sites in order to make this a viable renewal project. Quite to the contrary, the master redeveloper selected by Nora has submitted both Plan A and Plan B. Plan B, of course, acknowledges that revitalization and redevelopment is viable in a segmented approach, starting with perhaps the property owned by North Glen already, the anchor space. And you've heard testimony about what a difference it would make to revitalize that portion of the property. So I suggest to you respectfully that the record before you tonight is inadequate for you to make the decision you've been asked to make. That Nora can condemn this property and can transfer it to a private party for redevelopment. There simply isn't enough factual investigation to comply with the statute. So on that basis, I would urge you to do one of two things, either reject it entirely or table this issue until the appropriate factual analysis can be done. The time you will save will give you the opportunity to engage the people in this room, the competent, motivated, financially capable business owners you have, who are willing to be your partners, who will do this in a cooperative fashion that will avoid entirely the necessity of this decision you're being asked to make.
Your time is up.
Madam Mayor, I would have one remaining comment, if I could have just one minute in your discretion, I'd appreciate it.
One minute.
Thank you. My last point. The relocation statutes and North Glen's relocation policies require the city to make a reasonable effort to relocate displaced businesses to reasonably comparable space. I would suggest to you that that's not possible here. The management of Natural Selections has also already spoken, I won't repeat what they've said about their inability to relocate, but my client, Seven Ten Pipes, has an extraordinarily favorable location for its business. It happens to be located in the wing of a shopping center with a liquor store, a dispensary, and a hydroponics outlet. The synergy of these businesses produces additional revenue for my client, additional tax base for the city. And I believe it is impossible to recreate that situation, to take Mr. Cowan's business and put it into a reasonably comparable space elsewhere. So I would suggest to you that not only is this decision premature, but it is bad for business and it is bad for the city of North Glen. Unless there's any questions.
Questions? No means. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, my name's Aidan O'Donovan, the owner of Natural Selections. You all know me pretty well by now. You've heard from most of my employees and managers regarding our plight, which is slightly more unique scenario than the other businesses. You know, of course, I'm in full agreement, full agreement with all the other business owners, and think it's incredibly unfair to make us all move and give up everything we've worked so hard to build at the Huron Center over these past few years. However, in my case, moving is, moving's not an option. You know, while there are a few small slivers of land that meet the new distance requirements, zonings and buffers and all that, and none of these land, none of the building owners at these parcels are willing to work with me, are willing to work with the cannabis business, and they're not willing to sell either. Yeah, so by moving forward with eminent domain and with the Plan A style of redevelopment, you would be putting me out of business. I've spoken extensively with Cory about this, and, you know, I'm sure if you ask him right now, he'll tell you the same thing that you told me, which is that, you know, I think, you know, essentially it's that it's not the city's problem, that because these parcels exist, you know, the city might be off the hook and it's on me to relocate, even though it's not actually possible. You know, you know, these building owners have had hundreds of inquiries from potential cannabis businesses. If it was a possibility, you would have, you'd be setting a public hearing for one of the new businesses already. You know, so if there were somebody to, somewhere for me to move, you'd already know about it. So by voting yes tonight, you'll be undoubtedly putting me out of business. Legally, you may, you know, possibly be protected and putting me out of business, and I'm not sure exactly, but I'd really rather not get into a legal battle about it. Definitely don't want to go down that road. You know, I'm here, I'm not here to talk to you about what you can and can't legally do, you know, you're the government, and generally hold most of the power in these types of situations. So I'm asking you not to think about the legality of the matter, but the ethics behind it. You know, I've had several public hearings with you guys, and you've heard all about my background and my business. You know, I've worked towards this goal for years, and up until I found out about this eminent domain possibility, I'd just begun to achieve that goal. You know, I borrowed a significant amount of money from friends and family, all of whom believed in me and my vision, and now that's all at risk. The most frustrating part for me is that they weren't wrong to believe in me. You know, my business is doing incredibly well, it's successful, it's growing more every day, every week...
You've got one minute.
Okay. Every week, the sales numbers are better than the week before. So if you guys voted yes tonight and put out of business, the most frustrating part is, you know, my business won't have failed because of my brand, or my quality, or my advertising, or know-how, you know, the things that cause businesses to fail normally. In this case, my business will have failed because of government intervention, which is truly heartbreaking. So please, please, do not take this away from me, you know, from us, from my, our family, employees, and the community you serve. I implore you to vote no tonight. Like others have said, the no vote is not giving up on the Huron Center. A no vote is simply opening a dialogue with myself, with the other business owners, to begin working together to achieve our goals. You know, I want that center to be as pretty as possible, I want it to be as functionally sound as possible, and I desperately want an anchor tenant in the old Albertsons. I mean, all of these would be great for, for business. But these don't need to be done at the expense of us already there. Please do not let us be the collateral damage of a disagreement between Nura and our landlord. There really, there are other ways, and we'd love to explore those with you. And you can always come back to this as a last resort if those other ways don't work out, but please, you know, give us a shot to work together before resorting to eminent domain, because we're always told, you know, it's an urban renewal area, but our landlord said he's not going to sell, and we have a loan at least, so we, you know, invested all this money. And we, the first time I even heard eminent domain as a possibility was five business days ago.
Okay, your time is up.
I have a question.
Yes.
How did you hear about it being urban renewal area?
Urban renewal, I heard a handful, you know, probably three or four months ago, from an email from Debbie. And Debbie's been fantastic in trying to work with me to find these relocation places, but ultimately, it's not a possibility. Unless you guys can somehow force the landowners there to work with us, it's not going to happen, so.
Yes, Les, how does Plan B affect you?
Plan B would keep us in business. We would work with Impala and with Nura to do a facelift, to match a color scheme to the Albertsons, to work on the drainage issues, to put in any money that you guys want us to put in, because we have a lot invested. And then we'd get an anchor tenant in the Albertsons, and, you know, everybody wins in that, in that sense. I don't think, you know, it's like the person said before, I don't think that the calls you're getting about the center are because the wings are ugly. I think the majority of the blight is the fact that it's an empty Albertsons in a wasteland of a parking lot, and, you know, I just don't want to be the collateral damage here.
So just to clarify, when you signed your lease, you were not informed by your landlord that it was in an urban renewal area?
No, I wasn't informed by my landlord, and, and I was, I was informed by the city, but well after I made all the investment. And even when I was informed, I wasn't that worried, because I, you know, I didn't understand how eminent domain law worked, and didn't understand eminent domain as a possibility. I always thought, you know, if you have a long-term lease and your landlord is not willing to sell, then, you know, you're in the clear. I didn't realize that the government could step in and take property from private owners and, you know, give it to another private owner.
Karen? Thinking that Councilman Dodge asked you at your retail license hearing, if you were fully aware that you were within the Nura boundary and what that entails, and you've said yes.
Yeah, and that was, that was like a, probably a month or two after Debbie had sent me that original email. And I think if you, if you, and I really appreciate that Wayne brought that up at that point, but that was well after all the money had been invested. You know, we had already been open as medical, we had already done our certificate of occupancy, all our interior finishes, all of our cultivation, everything. And then, you know, that was, you know, that was, that was only a couple months ago, now that was in March.
But you were well aware, you were within the boundary, and any future improvements you would make to that, to your business, you were taking that risk.
And I haven't put any money since I found that out. I've been apprehensive to invest anything else. So all the money had been invested at that point already. And, and like I said, I kind of thought, you know, I always thought redevelopment meant, you know, the city's going to put some in the Albertsons, and we might have to work with them and close down for a few months while they redo the parking lot, while they, you know, work on our building. I had no idea that eminent domain was a thing that could, that could come in and put us out of business. I just, I just learned this in the last week.
Yes.
So, two quick questions. Term of your lease?
I think we have three and a half years left.
And you brought this up, and this got my mind clicking here, when you said Plan A, Plan B, Plan B, you're still there, and you'd be happy to be there in Plan B, in revitalized area. Would it matter who your landlord was, if it was Plan B?
Not at all.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, wait a minute. Before, before anyone else approaches, how many other employees of Natural Selection are here to speak? Can you tell me that? Is there only one more? Is there only one more? Okay. All right, okay.
Hi, my name is Kevin Gallagher. I am the compliance director at Natural Selections. And first, I want to thank all of you for mostly making it to our ribbon-cutting ceremony that happened very recently. We really appreciated all the positive feedback and the comments of how beautiful and nicer shop was. First, Natural Selections promotes city and state compliance along with cleanliness and professionalism with the utmost pride. It seems rather simple for these businesses and yourselves to work together to accomplish the goal of a nicer shopping center. Repaving, repainting, coming together to plant some trees seems like some basic solutions. This is not a ghetto, these are certainly not dangerous projects. These are the citizens of North Glen coming together for their own piece of the American dream. I understand eminent domain as government seizing private property for public use or providing just compensation. However, in this case, I do not see how public use or just compensation is even present. The private property will clearly not be for public use, rather the city will make money by selling the rebuilt structure to private developers. Also, the business I'm employed with is receiving $50,000 or so as compensation when the build-out and licensing of this business required over $300,000. Is receiving less than 20% compensation for your investment truly considered just compensation? Most cultures, that would be considered stealing. Before you vote, if you could really think about how this decision is not only affecting your constituents and their families, but how it will affect the future political spectrum of North Glen, and in turn, the state of Colorado. You and I grew up in this country, learning that blood, sweat, and hard work leads to success or the American dream. This business is my livelihood, my family, my American dream.
You have one minute.
However, if this passes, you're demonstrating to the youth of this country that blood, sweat, and hard work don't mean a thing. In fact, it's teaching every citizen that the government can and will crush the American dream. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you.
Yes.
You mentioned about repaving and striping. Now, did the landlord do that?
I don't know.
You don't know?
No.
Okay.[1772.95] All right, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, hi. I am a friend of Clear Creek Prospecting, which is one of the businesses that's threatened with the, with the eminent domain here. As you may have heard from the attorney that was just speaking, you, eminent domain was only meant to be used in, in rare situations, it's not supposed to be a bludgeon, and individual council members who may be profiting from this, and it may be found out, can be, can be also individually sued as well as the council. So I thought I'd point that out.
Wait a minute. We want to know what you're, who you're referring to.
Well, I'm not referring to anybody specifically, but I, but I, but I am letting you know that eminent domain-
Right, but the implication-
You do not attack the concept.
...accuses us basically, so to all these people out there, you need to make it very clear that there is nobody on this council-
No, I'm not addressing this to anybody specifically, but I am saying to the council, to the council, that you ought to be very careful with this, because you are opening illegal can of worms, and, and eminent domain was not meant to be used in a, in a fashion such as this. I, I want to remind you a little bit about Colorado history. Clear Creek Prospecting is a prospecting shop. I don't believe it can be easily relocated, but you may, you may know from Colorado history, you may not, that the, the only reason the Denver Mint is here is because the gold prospectors from the old days minted their own gold coins, and the government did not like that, that they were minting their own gold coins, so, so the Denver Mint came here. Originally, it was Jefferson territory, then it was Colorado terr- or first Kansas territory, then it was Colorado territory.
You have one minute.
Sorry?
You have one minute.
Okay, well, okay. Anyway, to me, to me, eminent domain in this situation is unconstitutional, is un-American, is unfair, and will probably lead to, like I say, a, a, a can of worms, illegal can of worms for the council and perhaps individual members.
Okay, next.
Counsel, or may I like the record to reflect that no one here on council stands to make any profit from, from this potential deal at Huron Center, so I'm not quite sure-
Thank you.
Most of us believe it. We think you have nothing to do with it. We feel like it's the first time you have a chance to even review it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Hello, my name is Carla Wright. I am a small business owner in Northland and have been so for almost a decade. I'm in another mall at 120th and Washington, and I got wind of this and thought I would come and support, because I'm in an older strip mall as well, and I'm not, well, let's put it this way, I'm concerned about the precedent this may set, and, you know, I've been a business owner quite a while, and I think if, if we begin to do this, we lose all of the flavor of Northland and all of the mom and pop shops that we all love so dearly, and we'll all just have corporate strip malls everywhere. And I don't like the vision of that. I own a bead shop and have a lot of client base, and I'm just a little bit worried about the precedent that's set, so, but I'll keep it brief, and I just wanted you to know, also, I don't know any of these people, I don't know any of the business owners, so I have no personal investment in this, except for the fact that I'm in an older strip mall and have the same concerns that this may happen to me and that I might be next. So consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Next.
My name is Huey Jackson Jr., and you just saw my partner Carla Wright speak. And to be honest with you, as a small business owner, this is one of the most terrifying things I have ever seen. This is, you know, we put 10 years into the city of Northland, and to think that we could just be thrown under the bus just like this, it's a scary thing. You know, our strip mall is deteriorating, we see that, we have never been told of urban renewal, just like these guys. Who's going to come to us with transparency and let us know before we sign our next lease what's going to happen to our mall? Something's got to be done, somebody's got to tell people upfront. Our landlord has said nothing, anything about it, but he's been around the mall, shooting pictures inside and out. Starts to make me question, what's going on behind the closed door that we don't see? We deserve the right to know, we put the time, the effort, the sweat. We've been in that strip mall by ourselves, there was no anchor in there for years, but now that the mall is back together, what's going to happen? We got to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jason Argreaves, I'm the store manager at Above &amp; Beyond Games on the west side of the strip mall, so someone from the other side. I just, I have to say, I've been at that store for four years now, and I basically run that store, top to bottom. And I have to argue with some of the stuff that I've heard tonight. I've heard that it's an eyesore and that it's not a good spot to be. Our store grew from about 800 square feet to 3,000 square feet. We have over 400 different customers that come in every week. No disrespect to the principal, but I have 200 kids that go to her school that come to my, my stores. And I just, I don't understand why everyone thinks it's this terrible, awful place. Like, we get, you know, 100-plus people in our store on Friday night to hang out, have a good time, as opposed to go out on the streets. And I just, I disagree completely with what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
How long's your, how long is your lease court?
I'm sorry?
How long is your lease court?
I don't know, I'm not the sort of-
Sorry.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Council. My name is Curtis Alberi. I've lived in Northland for 20 years, along with my family, just one block from the Huron Center. So I've seen the center when it was flourishing, I've seen it decline, and I've seen these new businesses also come in and really try their best to amp up the center and really revive it. And over this vast amount of time that the area has been declining, I just haven't seen enough improvement to believe that the businesses that are there can do it on their own. And so I'm here to speak in favor of eminent domain in order to make the Huron Center a place where students and families and all different members of the community can go and contribute to Northland businesses and really be a centerpiece of the community like it used to be. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Kevin Zhang. I'm part of Impala Capital. To answer all the tenant questions, all the people questions and all the council questions, we are Impala, we are an investment company, we have invest, have more than 10 shopping centers, we have money to remodel it. Last year, we asked Debbie Total, say, we want to repaint the shopping center. He told us, said, "No, don't do it." He said, "If you want to, do your part, don't do the option." And then, if we're going to spend the money to remodel it, we won't pass it to the tenant. I can guarantee you, the tenant, we have the same rent as before. If I can ask the council if you really vote going to take it down, can you ask Evergreen to honor all my tenants the same lease? Because I willing to do all my project, we willing to spend the money towards Evergreen. If you can go with the project B, we willing to invest the money, because that's what we plan to do. But the thing is, because we don't know what's going on, even we trying to painting the building, Debbie Total said, "No, don't do it." That's why we don't know, we struggle, because we same thing with the tenant, we don't know what happened. We want to spend the money, even when I do the, I ask the people to do, repair the parking lot, we still don't know what we're going to do, because we know we spend money, we don't know what happened. So if you really consider small business owner, if you can ask Evergreen, if you want to take it down, honor their lease. I really appreciate if you really, at least you can do for all my tenant, because we really love our tenant. We in there every day, we talk to them every time I come to town, I talk to everybody.
100% true.
You can ask all the tenant, every time I come in, I ask them, "How's it going? Everything, how's it good?" When, not only they're frustrated, we are the same thing, because we willing to put the money in. I can guarantee you, we won't pass the money to them, not even one paying. If we, even Evergreen, if we willing to work with us, if we go with the plan B, we willing to invest money like Evergreen to do whatever we do. We just pay the money, let him to do it, they share. Because the plan B is the one can save all my tenant, and everybody happy. That's why, you know, because we really small investor, we sometimes we don't know this kind of law. This is the fourth time we have trained shopping center, this is the fourth one, we have this problem. We don't know, we really don't know what's going on, and we really don't know what to do. If you can tell me what to do, we willing to follow, because we don't know. So if Evergreen is here, if you ask Evergreen if you can propose to B, I willing, we willing to give the money to him, and then he can help do whatever he thinking is the best for everybody.
Okay, we have a question.
You have.
So, as a property owner-
Yes.
-and I am a property owner of a building also, I have never sat back and said, "Oh, I should wait till something happens to make these improvements to my building," because those improvements should be done for your tenants. I don't understand your logic of thinking, "I'm going to wait and see what happens and if somebody else will help invest." You're a business owner, and you own quite a few businesses.
Yes.
And I think you're kind of pulling our leg a little bit, saying you don't understand this process if you do own that many buildings. I find it hard to believe you're not familiar with urban renewal law, eminent domain, all of that. But I do think it's your due diligence to, if you have to improve the parking lot, you're just increasing the price for when you resell it. You're only improving it for your benefit too, it's for your tenant's benefit and it's for your benefit. It isn't that you're going to lose money by making any kind of improvement, you really stand to gain from that. So I don't understand your way of thinking on that.
No, because we-
Good question.
Well, you want to ask, go ahead.
Because the thing is, we, we try, we last week, just last week, we still paint the parking lot. If you go there, you can see, we know whatever we need to, we're still doing it. It's because we want to do the big project, we want to do the facelift, we want to do remodeling, like the one matching to the remodel, the one council expecting or Evergreen proposal. We don't know what to do, what you want me to be like. Okay, do this way, then it's good for everybody. We don't know, because if you can tell me, say, okay, if you can do this way, of course the maintain, we still doing the maintenance, I'm talking about the remodel.
But if you remodel, the fair market value of your property is increased, and even if Nura would acquire your property, they would have to pay you the increased value that you've made with all of the improvements that you've done to your property. So to me, you're in a win-win situation there, and I think you should be doing the improvements for your tenants, because I don't see where you're going to stand to lose. You have to be paid fair market value, no matter what happens.
I do have a question for you. Even prior to Evergreen coming into the picture, why wasn't the property upgraded and brought into some kind of good condition with the painting and the striping and fixing those buildings?
We do, we do paint-
No, no, they haven't been. I want to know why they have not been.
Ask Debbie Total, last, end of the last year-
No, it has nothing to do with Debbie. When you purchased the property, why didn't you invest money to make this, this better for your businesses?
We, we spent money to upgrade all, all the conditions. We do do the parking lots, we maintain the parking lot, we fix all the bright study. If you can, if you see, go to the lease, we fix all those.
I, I'm also, I, I have driven in the parking lot, I've been in those buildings, and you have not, in my opinion, upgraded or fixed those buildings. No, I'm talking to him right now.
Can I?
No.
We, okay, we have a bill sent to Debbie Total.
No, no, it has nothing to do with Debbie.
No, no, because we are manager company, we manage the whole shopping center.
So who's the owner, then?
We are the owner.
So you're the owner, or you're a management company?
We are the owner, we also, because we think, when we hire the people to do the work, we have all the bills. If you can see the bills, whatever we do on the shopping center.
I think you're missing the question. What have you done to the outside of the building that you say is an improvement since the time you purchased the property? You've had the property longer than we've had this discussion, and so what did you do prior to the discussion that didn't need an approval by any of us?
We have repaired, every, every, every year repaired the parking lot, because it's all parking lot.
You talked about the building structure.
What about, what, do you have done anything besides the parking lot?
We do paint our buildings.
When was the building painted?
Right.
The building picked-
On the outside, when was the building painted?
The outside building?
Yeah.
We, no, we tried to paint it last year, we doesn't paint it yet, that's why. But Debbie Total told us, "Don't do painting."
It has nothing to do with Debbie. When you, when you bought that building two and a half years ago, what was the first thing you did?
We tried to remodel it, make it, because before, inside the pipe, because of the winter, all the pipe, the water is flow, we tried to clean up so we can get to the rain, to the rain term. So we inside, clean up inside.
What did you, what building did you clean up? What were you doing?
We cleaned up the liquid store, the pipe, bastard, water pipe, we have the tank 40, also have the water pipe broken, we fixed all the pipes.
Okay, all right.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
I have one. I guess to go back to it, you're talking about how much you care about your tenants and that you want them taken care of. Do you not think it would have been appropriate that when, that when you have your tenants signing a lease, that you inform them that they're in an urban renewal area before they sign the lease?
When we receive the-
It's yes or no? Do you, do you think that's appropriate?
Once we know, we, we inform everybody. Once we know this program happening, we, we let everybody know.
This property was blighted in 2008, so you should have known when you bought this building.
Nobody disclose or this information to us.
When you bought the property, you didn't know it was an urban renewal boundaries?
Because we-
I mean, I have to agree with Kyle here too, I mean, these tenants, we listen to them, they all have passion, love passion, and, and I really don't care for eminent domain. I'm just telling you where I'm coming from right now. I probably sit in this seat because of my stance is back in 2006 on blighting eminent domain, so I don't forget that. And, and these people are just like I was, and, and I feel for them, but I think they've been let down, I think you let them down, and that's one part of it there. But the thing that struck me tonight when I did my, and tell me if I'm wrong on this one here, I did the math backwards, and 9.85 million, that means in two and a half years, you wanted nineteen times your money that you were going to make in two and a half years. I think you're, you're, you're cleaning somebody up here, you know? It's a little unfair, I think. And, and you're swaying me, I'm coming from this stance, and, and you're changing me now, not to the good.
No, let me tell you what, we, you can ask Evergreen, you can ask Debbie Total, we are not showing it. You can tell all my tenant so far. All the tenant asked us, we said, "No, we don't show it." We never, in our mind, never want to show it. But because we need to, you guys say you want to take it over, that's why we need to hire somebody to the marketing, say, "Okay, now we're going to take it either way."
That's your job as a property owner, that's what you have to do. We have to do it for our building, and when we have vacancies, we have to do the mark, you have to do the marketing. It's not for the city to come in and help you do everything. I mean, you bought that property knowing exactly what it is and where it stands, and you should have been taking on the liability for all of that, too.
We take care all the tenant, every problem. You can all, all this tenant here, you can ask them, whatever the problem tell to us, we take care every single one of them. If they are right here now, you can ask them.
Well, I do, I see a lot of them shaking their heads when you're saying all the great improvements that you've done. I, I have seen it around the room right now tonight, so I'm just saying. I don't think they all agree with what you're saying.
And I, can I just make one more point, mayor? About what's going on here at the Huron Center? There has been, I, I got elected, you know, a little over a year ago. And, and since I've been elected, there has been one business that has had their business license revoked by the city of Northland.
Right.
And that was in your center. You know, and, 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 and a business that you brought into our community caused a huge impact on our police force. You know, we, we were having to go over there for, for, you know, all of these calls and, and ended up having to take their business license away. And that's a huge thing to do. And that's, and, and no, since I've been here, I haven't heard that done once. And, and so, so I think that shows, you know, you're talking about that you care so much about Northland and you care so much about this, this shopping center. But, I mean, one business that I've seen have their business license taken away was, was a business that you brought into Northland. And so I, I think that that's something that we also have to think about is, is, are, are they putting in the work? Do they, you know, do they care as, as much about Northland as they say they do?
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Zhang, thank you for coming tonight. Can you tell me when you purchased the property and approximately when you approached the city to ask about painting the exterior of your building?
Um, last, last, eh, last year, um, during the new week.
Yeah, it was, uh, last year. Uh, if you don't mind, comment.
Well, do you, do you remember the month of last year?
But we also have a, I already have a contractor. I also have all the, all the, um, all the detail. We have already have all the detail. We have had a contractor what to do already. I have all the information, if you want, I can send it to you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I comment on the conversation?
No, you've already spoken, thank you. Um, anybody else over here? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next. Yes, ma'am.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Violeta Diaz.
I'm in a chat with her. Good afternoon, my name is Violeta Diaz.
Solo quiero compartirles lo que yo hago.
I just want to share with you guys what I do.
Could you speak in the microphone so we could hear you? I'm sorry.
Okay. I just want to share what I do.
Okay.
En, en mi espacio hacemos charlas de nutrición que complementamos con ejercicio.
The space I leased, I do group readings of nutrition following with exercise.
Lo, lo cual Dios me ha dado la oportunidad de ayudar a muchas personas.
Which I have had the opportunity to help a lot of people.
Y obtener una, una mejor salud y estilo de vida con pérdida de peso.
I have helped them to have a better health life and also help them lose weight.
En estos dos años he ayudado a mucha gente y desearía seguir haciendo.
In these two years, I have helped a lot of people and I would like to continue helping them.
Gracias por escuchar.
Thank you for hearing.
Thank you. Can you tell me, where does she work?
Sol.
Natural selections or where? No, where do you work?
Ten twelve.
Ten, okay, okay, all right. Is there any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. My name's Howard Reck and I was not gonna speak until I heard Impala Capital.
So can you raise the microphone so that we can hear you?
Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm one of the owners that I want more comics. And I was not gonna speak until I heard what Impala Capital had to say. I applaud Natural Selects for putting this together. They are all very nice people. I don't want to see anyone lose their business. Uh, Impala Capital has been a terrible management company landlord, however you want to put it. We spent in our business a winter without air conditioning. We spent, oh, sorry, a winter without heat and a summer without air conditioning. Uh, we've asked for the seals around the doors to be fixed so they wouldn't flood our building. It's not been done. The roof leaks. The plumbing is bad. The building's a wreck. I have no desire to see anyone lose their business.
Right.
Okay? And I, I wasn't gonna say anything because I don't want these people lose their business. But if the council leaves the, the property in Impala Capital's hands, they might as well.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Next. Next, anyone else want to speak to council? Okay.
And, and mayor, one of the property owners would like to speak again if it's, if it's acceptable.
Go ahead, come on.
Hi, my name is Joyce Bishop. And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm prepared. I actually just came to see what's, what was going on and I wasn't going to speak either. Um, my husband owns the Tamale Kitchen and, and we understand the need for the change. We also just heard about this last week, so we were very surprised. And we don't know any of the legal terms or the laws or anything like that. But we love Northland, we want to stay here. All of our employees depend on us so they can pay their bills. They all live in Northland. And we continue to employ our employees from Northland and feed Northland. And people from all over, Broomfield, they drive all the way to us just to, just to get food. And we would have a hard time relocating and, and I know that because we continually look for, uh, prime locations. And where we are now, and I believe all the business owners would also agree, it's a great location. I think everybody agrees again that we need to improve the center. We just want to see if there's a way that we could compromise to keep all the business owners there and make it look pretty. Now whoever the owner is or how that comes across, I'm just asking if there is a way we can try to make it work in a partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much for allowing me a second chance to talk a little bit more. I hold a lot of question regarding, you know, and some of my question, my partner will be able to answer. I'm more like the contact persons for the shopping center. And my kind of deal with the previous owner, like the anchor, anchor space and Albertson's building. And I, I got to kind of let you guys know because I hang a kind of tight in a way because if we want to improve the outside area, because it's not only owned by us, but also owned by the Albertson's, you know, owner as well. So we need to get them approved. Say every time we want to spend certain amount of money, especially, you know, bigger project, we need to get them to approve to be okay or not. Even for the property maintenance of the whole shopping center, we, we need to get them to approve to say, I need sort of, uh, individual, is that okay or not? So it's like partnership, it's not like we, we can just improve the building ourselves. It's more like we need to work together to improve it. Same thing we, uh, after the open the new top level, we really glad because in the past, because there's a lot of restrictions, like what kind of tenant can bring in or not. And I, we did propose to open new one saying that maybe you need to work together to remove all these restrictions so we can bring more people and bring proper good business to, to North, uh, to Northland. And we did mention that, but no accident has been taken from the new one side. And same thing for the property management too. We have a discussion with, uh, uh, Ms. Debbie Toto as well. Uh, she, she actually very active to involve and I really appreciate that because in the previous owner, they just say, okay, I want to do this project, they refuse, they decline, they decline. They keep declining because if you want to do a bigger project, I want to spend, spend the money, they don't want to spend the money because they don't have income. They don't have a budget to, to improve this place. We see, we, because we believe in the image of the shopping center, we want to make it beautiful. We want to make it attractive, attractive to the customer. So it's same thing good for the business owner down there. So it's more like the theme, the, the basic thing for our strategy would be we need to move the tenant in there. And then once they have the tenant down there, you have a business down there and have activity going in. Then we can, we can, at the same time, we can improve the property at the same time. So that's more or less is our strategy. Same thing once Debbie, uh, uh, Newon took over. I actually refer, there's, there's a tenant interest in the anchor space, I keep referring to, uh, Ms. Toto. And she's very, very great. I'm really happy to work with her because like even the carnival, like that one I before to, to, to her. And then she will be able to get it on, go on and then sign them on and then get it, get it moving and get the business off. Before, when I worked with the previous King's property, they said no. This, this business, they said no. That business, I want to improve the property, they said no. But I'm really glad because Newon finally be able to get the property. And then I would say, that's great. Then we can move to, to, toward to beautify this place. And I did come in here, you know, that last time they say they, they want to kind of discuss about what kind of playing they can come in here and then improve the shopping center. I really excited. I fly over here, I discuss with them, discuss all the strategies that we can do. And then suddenly, next thing I know is like, okay, oh, there's, there's an animal domain coming to, to me. And I'm really surprised. I am willing to work, we willing to work to, to vitalize this place. We want to see this place as beautiful as other shopping center. But we need to work with the partner, Newon, the anchor space, because they have the power too. Because we cannot just do it ourselves. We need to get them to approve for all these kind of big things. And I'm pleased to you to work with us. We willing to make that place as beautiful, with the place that people love to go to. And all the tenant here can also stay here. The oldest tenant are lovely tenant. They are great business owner. They put their threat money into business. I'm putting my threat money in there as well. But this is justice. We got to be justice to everybody.
All right.
Mayor, I have a question. So you've referred to the restrictions and the covenants. Are you telling me that you didn't know the covenants and the restrictions before you actually purchased the building?
I, I got to know the restrictions after King's property told me there's such a restrictions. And I tried to work with King Property, that's the previous owner, say we supposed to relax that restrictions to have more business to go in there, that shopping center. But they refused. And once I knew, acquired the property, I proposed to, to Newon saying that let's relax all this covenant, restriction covenant, so we can have a better business. I'm, I, I want to see the successful on the anchor space. Because once that's successful, because that's, then everybody will be successful in a way. And that's...
Two follow-up questions. I, I just, I, I think you're missing my question. Before you even purchased, gave up your hardworking money, did you know that there were restrictions and covenants on the property? Did you get due diligence from your attorney, from whoever you went through purchasing? As a business owner myself, that's something I would have known going into buying a property.
I understand, we did not know there's such a restrictions in place. We, because this is like, this is part of like, kind of like our loan documentation.
Yes, but that's your job to know that. So coming back now and saying that there's restrictions and that's impacting your ability to get people in there, that is not this council's or Nura's problem. That's yours as a business owner to have known that.
I, I acknowledge that, that I can live with that. And for me is I, I want to restrict the covenant so the anchor space can have people in there. It's the anchor space, because down there, there's a restriction, say the anchor space cannot have a gym. I say, I'm okay, I'm released to you, I want to work with you. I'm okay to have a gym to come in. I beg the tenant to move into the anchor space. That's the key because if you don't have tenants down there, the building is just a house. You have nobody living there, it will deteriorate. And then you will become, uh, right, because nobody taking care.
You purchased a building that was already deteriorated and you haven't done anything to improve it.
Well, if you look into the key things, like you need to move the people in there so all the property can be taken care by itself.
All right, and then my last comment really quick, because this one has gotten me. Every time somebody that's come up has said something about us not doing anything about the Albertsons. Just for the record, we have done a lot of outreach and effort to bring in an anchor tenant. And you know that every time we have approached someone, they have mentioned the deteriorating area around it as a factor to why they don't want to be there. So you're impacting our ability to do something with our property. Just want to make sure that's very clear, that we've made a ton of effort in that area.
Leslie?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, you know, one of the reasons why Nura bought that property is because Ken Properties wasn't doing anything to make that property better. And so we needed to remove that obstacle. Now that it's impacting our ability to do anything with it because of the other areas that's, as Marcy just said, are deteriorated, that doesn't help us make this property better. So you made, made a comment that, you know, you've been working to make this property more attractive. All I've heard was striping in the parking lot and plumbing that was defective, that you had to correct. I haven't heard any other beautification or anything that's been done to make this attractive, to bring more people in. So, you know, your, your story there that you're presenting is rather weak from a making it attractive and, and working with, you know, working with us to try to improve it. Also, you know, I know that letters have gone out with no responses. So that concerns me that, that information has gone out trying to negotiate with you folks to make things happen and nothing's happening back. So, you know, if we wanted to partner, we need people to respond and to be responsive to us and to our needs too, since this does impact our community quite a bit. So obviously, this is something that we don't want to damage businesses. We want to improve our area and our, and our community. And it's something we're very passionate about too. We're not trying to damage people. We're trying to fix a problem that's been going on for eight to 10 years, of which you've been part of it for two and a half. So I just wanted to share that because I'm sorry I'm getting a little bit worked up here with your comments.
Okay, thank you. Kara?
And, you know, once again, I'm gonna reiterate, you also said that when you make an improvement, you have got to get the approval of your tenants. Well, that's...
Not tenant, the owner of the bigger anchor space.
Well, that's not what you said originally. You said if you made an improvement to the parking lot or had to paint, you were going to have to ask the tenants. And that's not correct. And I'm sorry, but you can make those changes. You could have beautified this property. You just choose not to and you think that everyone else will step in and help you beautify this property for you. Yeah.
Joe?
So just to the tenants and the people out there that are against this, I just want to fill you in on something. It's in all the communications that we've had with staff regarding this business, regarding this property, it seems like every time we've tried to contact the owners of the wing, it's, there's, there's been some sort of issue. There, there's no communication, they're not responding and stuff like that. Okay? So we've had a problem dealing with Impala, trying to get things done around there. And, and I think it's a shame that we have to throw this out there to light a fire, to get you guys here. Here, physically here with the city to, to deal with this. Because from what I understand and all other, and all other correspondents, it's like you guys just, you're oblivious to what goes on over here. Now, you may show up and you say that they're here all the time or, or tour the place. Am I correct? They, your landlords come and...
Uh, I'd say the landlord comes around about once a month, once every month and a half. And he make sure to stop in and talk to each of the tenants.
Okay, well, apparently that's not happening.
Yeah, I would just...
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out, okay? But apparently that's not happening with the city. And that's what we are all getting, is, is there's no, there, there's nothing from you.
Can I come on, Debbie?
You, you don't want to deal with it. So now, you're here and you have to deal with it. And it's a shame that the rest of these people, whose livelihoods rely on a building that you provide for them, rest in the hands of us.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, I do acknowledge that, uh, you can, I can have Debbie Toto talking to me. There's any, any kind of email, I respond within the same day. Now, this one regarding the Newon offer that provided us is from an attorney. And I'm not attorney and I don't know about the law. And I need to consult, I need to find a retail attorney, say exactly what is this about? I did reply the email to the attorney that Newon hire. I say, I will need to talk to, I need to consultation. Then I respond. So I need to find, because all, all, I mean, uh, uh, animal domain, this is something that I fought the first time. And I don't know about law. I'm, I, because there's so many legal issue that I won't be able to speak as attorney. Because when there's an attorney coming to me and talk to me, there's always legal issue that I won't be able to navigate.
Do you know, it seems to me that you could have responded in an email or a phone call just exactly saying that to Debbie or the city manager, saying, I will contact my attorney and I'll get back to you. But you didn't do that. It was weeks before we ever got a response. Not we as, but Debbie's. So you did not respond in a timely manner.
I, I...
You did not respond in a timely manner.
I, I do apologize that I won't be able to get it to in a timely manner because I need to consult with attorney and consult with the market. Because you, you put in a offer that I don't, I need to consult because I won't be able to make this.
May I ask you...
Madam mayor, madam mayor, we're probably getting off the topic of the blight determination for tonight.
Can I, but we have, um, we're gonna ask Tyler to come back up for a moment.
Real quick, mayor, too, and I just want to reiterate what council's been saying is, is that I, it saddens me.
You can sit down.
It saddens me that, that, you know, these companies have invested hundreds of thousands, some, some say millions of dollars in their businesses and they were never informed that they were in an urban renewal area when they were signing a lease.
Right.
There is just something shady that, about that. And, and I, it just, it saddens me that these people are up here talking about their livelihoods and they weren't giving, given the full information that, that, that they deserved from their landlord. And I think it really shows, you know, something about, about what's going on here.
Right, I agree. No, I'm...
That wasn't a question.
We're done. Uh, Tyler, Kara?
Hi, I'm sorry, I asked for you to come back up because after sitting through this, and I appreciate that you've sat through this entire thing. My wonderment is what incentive is there for you to work with Impala on Plan B and make it work to your advantage? Because you're not gonna do it out of the kindness of your heart, even though I'm sure you're a kind person. I'm just saying, there has to be something in it for you. And after you see how they deal and you know...
Yeah, I've experienced it.
Okay, so that's my question.
So when we submitted our proposal for the RFP, um, we were actually last to look at it both ways. Because at that point, you know, the city still does not own the Impala property. And so there were no guarantees that, you know, council would ever initiate condemnation. And we had tried unsuccessfully for a long period of time to purchase the Impala property with, you know, a lack of response or evasive responses. And so the reason why Plan B was... And so, the reason why Plan B was created was because that was kind of the worst case scenario. And when we met with Nura, um, you know, there was some hesitance to do a Plan B, because it does not solve a lot of the long-term issues of out-of-state landlords, you know, Ken Properties was from Florida, Impala's from California, uh, who are not making investments in the properties necessary to make them attractive. And, um, some of the feedback that we've gotten since being selected through the RFP process by anchor tenants is that they have those exact concerns. We don't want to come and put a new business and then have the rest of the center sit and, you know, and, and struggle. And again, this is, this is nothing to do with existing tenants, it has to do with the physical plant. Um, you know, when we were under contract several years ago, what we discovered is that, you know, the entire parking lot needs to be replaced, you know, the entire HVA systems need to be replaced, you know, the foundation and the liquor store space is six foot, uh, six inches delta from the stem wall. There's major subsidence in that liquor store floor, uh, and there's major structural issues in that whole east wing, which is why, after we spent a lot of time thinking about it, we determined that it would be cost prohibitive to bring that east wing up to Class A, you know, shopping center standards. You know, you're, it's better to, it's cheaper to demolish it and rebuild than to try to rehab it. And so, but rebuilding it wouldn't solve the parking obsolescence issue. So that's why it, it was in our opinion, and it's, you know, there are lots of opinions, obviously, but that the center was best served long-term to take out that wing to improve its ability for the shops that faced Huron and to create a better parking lot, and also solve the drainage issue, which you guys are very, very aware of. So, um, but like I said earlier, you know, finding tenants is hard, and, you know, we will, you know, if, if we move forward and council moves forward and this whole thing comes together, you know, we will, you know, sit down with all the existing tenants, talk about their business plans, talk about how they're doing, um, and see if there's a way that we can, you know, extend their leases, and, and, and we will have to adjust rents though, because we'll be investing millions of dollars, you, into the property to bring it, you know, up to snuff. But if we can, you know, keep their business plan viable, and, and, you know, certainly their sales will go up, because we are making improvements, we're bringing an anchor tenant in, I think it could be a real win-win, and, and the tenants who are there today will do even better. Because again, it's, it's much easier for me if I can keep an existing tenant in place versus paying for a new TI, a new leasing broker, going out searching the market, you know, that's, that's a lot of brain damage that we don't want to go through.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation.
And Leslie?
I just wondered, do you envision with, with your plan, that most of the tenants that are there could actually be moved into a space you were looking to revitalize or to rent?
I thi, yeah, I think a lot of them can be relocated, you know, there's still some vacancy in the center. Um, you know, I can't speak to the regulatory issues on the marijuana establishment, because I think there's some challenges with that that I don't really fully understand. Uh, but yeah, no, I, I, it's, it's our goal, again, to keep as many tenants who are there in place, and if, you know, for people in the east wing, they're just, they're not in a sustainable building. I mean, there are major structural issues that Impala probably doesn't even know about, because I'm not sure they did a lot of due diligence when they acquired the property for half a million dollars, um, that, um, you know, that, that can't be solved, frankly, with tenants in place. I mean, you can't, you can't jack up a, a floor slab with some business operating there. So there's something like that that just needs to be dealt with, it's been deferred for a long time.
Tyler, real quick.
Yeah.
So I see the Plan A, Plan B here. On the Plan B, when, if it's just to redevelop our, the, the anchor site, in your opinion, is it, is it more difficult to, to get that, that Type A anchor in there in Plan B than if, than if we went with?
Well, absolutely, I've met with them, and they said absolutely. There's some reticence, so, yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Tyler. I don't think there's any questions right now, so.
Madam, oh.
Yeah, I actually, um...
Don't you wish you bought that for half a million?
I've, I do. I actually, I wish Nura would have bought it for half a million dollars.
Okay. Um, your opinion?
Yes.
Compared to the 9.85 value, what, what do you say that's worth value today?
Uh, the offer that we made to Impala was for a million dollars last year, and that was based upon our engineering and cost estimates of all the work that had to be put into that building to, um, to get it up to speed. Now, I will admit, you know, we don't have any knowledge of their rental, and there's two ways to value property, you know, one's on a price per square foot, and one's on an income approach. And I, you know, don't know, or frankly shouldn't know, what all the tenants pay at this point, but based upon the costs that we are aware of, and the, the income we were aware of from when we were under contract years ago, um, a million dollars, you know, was the valuation we came up with, um, which, you know, again, that would have been, you know, twice the price that, that they paid, so we thought that was, that was fair.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
And I'm over here. If there's no more, if there's no more public comment...
I was going to just ask that.
Okay, because, um, I wanted to say a couple of things during the public hearing portion before we go on to action later in the meeting.
Okay, all right. Wait, wait, stop, okay. Oh, thanks, thanks, Tyler.
Sure.
Have you spoken before?
I just would like to make one comment.
Nope. Is there anyone here that has not spoken in public hearing and wants to?
Even if I didn't speak for my supporting members?
I asked the question, is there anyone here that has not spoken that wishes to? Okay. Do you have, do you have anything different than you? Thank you, all right. Cory?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, you've received over two hours of testimony. And so before you close it, I'm not going to comment on the facts, that is ultimately for you to make determinations later in the meeting. But there were a couple of points made that I want to make some clarification so that the record's clear.
Okay.
Um, first of all, there's no time-critical nature to this. To the extent that the blight determination has to be within the past seven years, I would suggest to you that the project, as it's defined under the Urban Renewal Act, um, started at the latest when Nura acquired the Albertsons building. And that's just based on the definitions in the Urban Renewal Act. Um, there's also been some confusion about who does what, and so, for what it's worth, Mr. Carlson, who's testifying, I think, um, as, as part of Evergreen, um, was retained by Nura, not by the city. So, um, the city doesn't have any contractual relationship with Evergreen, that is through Nura, which is a separate entity.
Right.
The city's role tonight is to ultimately determine whether to authorize Nura to proceed forward in attempting to acquire their property through eminent domain if necessary, and that's, that's part of the determination later when you consider CR 81. Um, but to the extent that things like relocation benefits, um, and there was a suggestion made that the city was offering relocation benefits to tenants, once again, if authorized, that's, that's something that Nura would do with their statutory authority.
Right.
And then lastly, um, I think Mr. Marsh, during his comments, talked about, um, the parcels owned by Impala being necessary, being, um, for a viable project. He's right, and so, you have to make that determination. If you determine to approve this resolution, I would, um, suggest you look at Section 5 of the resolution, which has exactly, um, that language, that it says it requires inclusion of all of the property. The property is defined in the resolution as the Impala-owned property. So he's, he's absolutely right, you have to make that finding, you've heard evidence, you have the blight study, um, as part of the evidence, and ultimately, when you consider CR 81, you can take all of that into account. And when you do consider CR 81, I'll walk you through, um, your options this evening.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other questions, comments for Cory, or any one else in the room? Okay, I will now close the public hearing, and we will move on the agenda to resolution CR 81. Oh, wait, first of all, we'll back up, is, the next thing on the agenda is ordinance as first reading, Joanna?
This is for CB 1854, the bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 5-2-4 of the North Glen Municipal Code.
Would you approve? Susan, John?
Yes, I'll ask Cory to introduce this to council.
And this has nothing to do with the Huron Center?
Right.
For what it's worth. Um, this, this ordinance is brought forward, um, at the city's request, as council is aware, the city is engaged in litigation as plaintiff, along with the cities of Commerce City and Aurora, and a business that's located in Aurora against Adams County, regarding Adams County's imposition of a sales tax on marijuana that the city believes is unconstitutional and unauthorized as a matter of law. This ordinance, if adopted, would memorialize that in terms of the authority of the city's finance director, and in terms of what he is authorized to do in the collection of sales tax. And specifically, it says that he's authorized to enter into intergovernmental agreements with those entities that are authorized to collect sales tax in the city of North Glen. The entities that are authorized to collect sales tax in the city of North Glen are the city of North Glen and the state of Colorado, who also collects sales tax on behalf of counties, but is not authorized to collect a marijuana sales tax. Thus, the idea is that if they're not authorized to collect the sales tax, the finance director's not authorized to enter into an agreement with them.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
We'll close that vote, and CB 1854 on first reading passes unanimously, and I would like to note for the record that the public hearing on CB 1854 will be held on June 22nd, 2015, here in City Hall Council Chambers.
Thank you. Now, next we'll move to resolutions, and the first one we're going to take is CR 81.
A resolution confirming that the property commonly known as the Huron Center is blighted, as that term is defined at CRS Section 3125.105.5A, and authorizing the North Glen Urban Renewal Authority to use eminent domain to acquire property within the Huron Center, and subsequently transfer it to a private property, private party, excuse me.
Second, Cory?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I, I would suggest to you, after hearing the testimony, ultimately you have three options tonight. The first is as the motion was made to approve the resolution. Um, you've heard, again, well over two hours of testimony, you have the blight study, um, original blight study, as well as the update in your packet, you have all of the evidence you've heard. So you can certainly vote to approve the resolution consistent with the motion. Uh, the second option obviously is to vote no. Um, voting no would, um, not authorize Nura to proceed with redevelopment at this time of the Huron Center with the use of condemnation. Um, it would still have the ability to proceed forward and attempt to work cooperatively, uh, but they would not be authorized. The, this council has to specifically authorize the use of condemnation based on the findings in this resolution. The third option would be to continue it, and there is nothing in the statute that requires you to approve it tonight. One possible, um, option for the council is to continue as to a date certain. If you continue it to a date certain, uh, the notices do not need to be resent, because all the folks that are here would know when the continuance is and would come back. If you believe there is an opportunity for the tenants, for Impala to Evergreen, to try to work together, to collaborate, to at least give them that opportunity, whatever chance that might be, you can certainly continue it, continue it to a date certain, and, again, provide that opportunity. If, if they come back with unsuccessfully, um, that's another fact certainly that is something you can consider.
Discussion?
And, and if you're inclined, um, in order to give enough time, I'd suggest probably July 13th, which is, uh, the first regular meeting in July, it's approximately 30 days.
All right, discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
So, I, I want to just stress that as a resident here, and I'm a native, the one thing that has bugged me the most is when I hear people talk about our city, and they talk about the Huron Center and how bad it looks. And I heard tonight the word flavor be used. That is not the flavor that I want North Glen to be viewed as. That is definitely not the flavor I want. The other thing, on the media this morning, what does it say to residents when the media as well refers to our city in North Glen and that development as rundown and in shambles? That was a direct quote from the anchor that did the story this morning. I do not want the word shambles and rundown associated with our city. That is very alarming.
Where's this?
So what I would say, and ask council to consider, is give you one more chance, and this is to Impala, you need to communicate with us, and you need to make an attempt, because this is on you now. I think you have deceived a little bit, your tenants, into thinking that there hasn't been communication and we haven't been working with you, when that's not true, and this is your chance. So if I'm giving you that chance as a councilperson, you prove to me that you could do something with the center, because you said yourself you can't do it yourself, and I'm pretty sure you can't. But I'm going to be in favor of seeing that you guys get that opportunity, and you better seize that opportunity and make it happen. So I'm just going to ask council to consider that. Would that your last chance?
Anyone else have a comment?
Well, Kara? I was going to say, if we would like to give them a 30-day extension, how would you reword this, or?
I, I would suggest the maker of the motion, and second, withdraw the motion just so that the record's clear, and then move to, um, table the matter until the July 13th meeting. Tabled consideration of CR 81, the public hearing's been closed.
Would you be willing to do that, Joe?
To what?
To allow them, to, to allow them...
To take back?
Uh, take back for the 30 days? 30 days to try to work something out that would be beneficial?
You know what? But I'm just going to throw off my personal views right now, and, and, and I would love to see you guys work something, but, in the back of my mind, I just have a feeling that you guys are going to sit on your hands, so, I will take it back, but you guys are going to prove me wrong. I, I just, I just think that, I just think that this is just going to...
Well, let's have more discussion before we have a motion.
And Leslie, I, I'm inclined not to. Uh, you know, there's, a couple of questions come to my mind about this, this whole project, is, when is enough enough? And, and how long does our community have to suffer? Um, you know, to me, it's been far too long, you know. Uh, we've tried to work with the property owners, uh, and, and I'm not quite sure if this is going to, if this is just going to prolong this whole process, and I, I think our community suffered long enough, and, uh, I think that we've seen a lot from this testimony, and, and my heart breaks for some of these business owners, because I think that, that they're great members of the community, and they contribute to our, to, to our community in a positive way, and I think that they've been led wrong by their landlord, uh, and I think that says a lot to, to, to the landlord. You know, but I have to, I have to look at our community too, and, and, and they've suffered, they've suffered a long time, too long. And so, when, when we say enough is enough.
Any, wait, so, Kim?
As council members were elected to make some pretty tough decisions along the way, I've now been on council for approximately six years. The Albertson Center has been vacant since 2006, the Albertsons and Rite Aid portion of that. In that time, I have seen city staff and our Nura representatives go to bat for this community to try to get that center redeveloped. As a ward forward representative where that sits, Jean and I here at every single meeting that we hold in the community, what are you going to do about the Huron Center? It looks like crap. What are you going to do? It's a terrible place. What are you going to do to make our community better? You know, I'm here tonight to say, I'm going to make our community better, and I'm going to stand up for our residents who have sat here long enough with a very rundown center. And excuse me if I get a little fired up about this, but it's very important to me. It has been an eyesore over in that area for us, unfortunately. Yes, we do have tenants in here. Tonight, it's a great example of our business community, and they're coming forward and saying, "But wait, we want to stay in North Glen, we want to make this work." Nothing has been said in any of this process that says, "We're going to shut down those businesses." Nope, we're done, we're going to say, "Nura, you go forward, you go ahead and do whatever you want and close down those businesses." Not, excuse me, ma'am. That has not been said whatsoever. That's not the intention of this council, of any staff member, of anyone in our community to shut down businesses in our centers. It's quite the opposite. We want to make an impact, we want to improve that community. We answer to the residents of our community. Our residents are not happy with the Huron Center, and it's time for me to stand up and say, "I'm done with it." Um, Impala, you have owned the center for approximately two and a half years? You said you came in last year to ask about painting it. What happened to the year and a half that you had before that? Why didn't you do anything at that time? Um, you know, why did it take something like that where our city wants to come, our... You know, why did it take something like that where our city wants to come, our urban renewal authority has come into council saying, we've done everything that we've possibly been able to do. We've worked with the previous owners of those tenant anchors. We've worked with the owners of the Albertson Center before we purchased it. We can get nowhere. They went out for a public process, asking the development community, please come in, give us something that we can do with that. We received two proposals from 18 organizations that attended a meeting. What does that tell us? That tells us this is not going to happen by letting the private sector redevelop this center. We've been trying this for almost 10 years. The private sector has not come in and made that center a viable, healthy, attractive center for our community. And I'm sorry, but I've had enough. And for it to take this type of an action for the businesses and the owners to now all of a sudden say, oh, no, we want to work together, I'm sorry, that's not comfortable for me. That's not what I see as a good image for our city. That it takes something like us wanting to try to improve that center and keep our businesses to have to go to this, to get the property owners to come in and say, oh, we're ready to work with you now. I think it's a travesty. It's a disservice to our businesses. It's a disservice to our community. And, you know, I applaud our businesses for coming out tonight and taking the time, taking at least, while we've been here for two and a half hours, all the other work that you've done in the last days gathering signatures of both residents and non-residents. That takes a lot of work and dedication. So you are absolutely the kind of businesses that we want in our community. You're the owners that we want in our community. But we can only let it go on for so long. And like I've said, I'm tired of just letting it go on. It's time for something to happen and to have that center be the attractive center that it can be for our community and our residents. And with that, I'll shut up now. But I'm done.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Carol.
For me, I thought it was, well, it was a really hard decision when I walked in, made even harder by the proceedings tonight. I definitely am on board at this point for a continuance. I feel really awful punishing the businesses for what is the fault totally of Impala. I'm able to give you the continuance for 30 days in my mind if I see a viable option come forward in 30 days, and that means Impala has to do something. And if it's nothing, I'm on board for eminent domain. If it comes back in 30 days with nothing viable, that's just the way it has to go because everything Kim said is correct. We have done everything possible to make this happen. And you've heard the testimony tonight that for a shopping center that they bought for half a million dollars to be asking for a price of 9.85 at this point, when all it's done is deteriorated since they've owned it, is so ridiculous, I can't even state that. So you see what we're dealing with. And if the only way to finally improve it is to eminent domain it, I am totally on board with what Kim is saying, except that I really feel for all the businesses, and I want to give them the option, or, you know, you can go out and try and see what you can do in 30 days. I'm just not sure what you're going to bring back, but I'm on board for giving you that time.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
You know, I have to, I mean, eminent domain goes against every fiber I have in my body. I mean, that's where I came from, so I'm kind of anti that. But boy, you guys sure do push me. I mean, I think you need the 30 days. If not, I think you lost me. So I think you have to come back and show me something. And I'm all about these guys. They have that deep passion that you want to have in business, and we want that in the community. But, boy, I think you need to dig down deep in 30 days, and I'm on board. I mean, it's been seven years, it's been there, what's another 30 days? I get that you don't want to waste any more time, but I have a tough time with eminent domain, so.
Any other comments?
And I'm just not sure as a matter of parliamentary procedure if the maker ever withdrew his motion. So if not, then the continuance takes precedent if someone makes that motion, but I just want...
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion. Continue for 30 days.
Do I hear a second?
You haven't even heard my answer?
I heard him. Didn't he babble for like two minutes or something?
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second. For clarification, 30 days would not get...
It's to July 13th. Okay, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion?
And I just want to make the comment that I agree, I think we should give everyone the 30 days, but I also believe that you've had a long time to take care of this problem and have not addressed it at all. And I have been on council for a long time, and I have to say that every time I talk to a resident, it's what are you going to do with the Huron Center? And we never get the results that we want. And so this council has to make a very hard decision, so it's up to the community now to make, to start doing something because you have until July 13th, and then we're going to make the decision for you.
Okay. Please open the vote.
Jean?
Jean? Nothing?
You doing all right down there?
I'd go too much.
Pardon me?
I would go too much to give adequate time.
No, no.
He's had adequate time.
He had two and a half years. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Please vote. I'll close that vote and the motion to table CR 81 to July 13th.
I'd like to reconvene the regular council meeting, and we'll move on the agenda to resolutions, and the next one is CR 75.
A resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of North Glen and the regional transportation district for the 112th Avenue Station Area Master Plan. Move to approve. Second.
These, the next two items are related to each other, and they're related to the 112th Avenue Station Area Master Plan. The first of these items, CR 75, is the agreement with the RTD that provides for the funding of this project. And the funding is $150,000, which is $120,000 that is provided through a federal grant. And so 30,000 would be a local commitment. And there's another item that is not on the agenda tonight because there's additional work that needs to be done, but that would provide for 10,000 of that 30,000 local match to be provided by the city of Thor.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 75 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we move to CR 77.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of North Glen and Lease and Associates LLC for the 112th Avenue Station Area Master Plan. Move to approve.
Second.
The amount of this agreement would be $150,000, and the consultant is Leasing Associates in conjunction with the first item that was just approved by council.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 77 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 78.
A resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, the city of North Glen's 2015 allocation from the state ceiling for private activity bonds, to issue revenue bonds for the purpose of providing housing programs to low and moderate income persons and families in the city of North Glen and elsewhere in the state of Colorado, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment of allocation.
Mr. President?
The total amount of our allocation under this program for 2015 is $1,868,550. There's a number of potential eligible activities, and they're listed in your memo, but we're recommending that we go, we allocate these to CHAFPA so that they can be used to authorize funds for qualified housing programs.
Thank you. Discussion?
Only in North Glen? I'm sorry, Kim. Is that only in North Glen?
Yes.
No, that's not correct.
That's not.
Well, I'm sorry. Okay. Brooke, do you want to explain that?
That seemed like an awful lot.
Yeah. No, it's not. It's North Glen and other areas, so go ahead.
CHAFPA Services, excuse my voice tonight, CHAFPA Services statewide, but the private activity bonds that we would be assigned would be eligible for North Glen residents.
Right. But not specifically for North Glen. I mean, it's, all the money's not coming to North Glen.
Well, I think what it is, is that the $1.8 million is identified as for North Glen residents. And most of the communities in the front range do assign their money to CHAFPA under the PAVs for this purpose. But the question becomes is, I don't know if all of that money ever gets fully utilized within the city of North Glen because there's not enough participants.
Right. Thank you. Yes, Les? One thing, Brooke, this money is eligible, like if the SCL needed it for any kind of development, or if Tyler needed it for redevelopment, or anybody else who was doing anything, it would be available or could be used to help them as well, right?
Under PAV, we have the discretion to consider other types of utilization for blighted areas as well as industrial impact bonds and also for nonprofits. In the case of SCL, as it's currently set up, we have a for-profit developer that is actually building the property, and so we would need to explore whether or not the current tenant ownership arrangement would allow itself to be considered for that type of situation. And obviously, for blighted areas, it's something that can also make available as well. But it's not, but under what we're proposing tonight, we're specifically proposing to assign this to CHAFPA. Those other two alternatives would require us to do a separate action or activity if that's what council desires.
So I guess I was just wondering, is there a way you can do half and half, or two-thirds and a third, or anything like that? I realize that that's not what this is written, how it's written.
Right.
Is there a way to do anything at all that would maybe help blighted areas?
I think if we were going to do that, what we'd have to do, I'm sorry, we'd have to do, I think, is have the council table this tonight so that we could do a little bit more research, and also contact, for example, Evergreen and find out if that would be something that would be beneficial to them. The other thing is, I think these private activity bonds for this year are specific for 2015, and so it may be that, for example, Evergreen may not be able to use them until next year, or there might be other projects.
Did CHAFPA approach us, or did staff approach CHAFPA on this?
Actually, it's over the last couple of years, we've had a PAV that we have, I should say, last year was the first attempt to assign the PAVs. Prior to that, we had not done anything, I think, since 2010. And so primarily, what we were trying to do is follow the footsteps of what the previous councils' wishes were and what we've done with this revenue bond.
Well, and we get that it's an annual allocation. If we don't use it, we lose it, and there's absolutely no cost to the city to assign these to somebody else. And what it's doing is then bringing it back into the city in some fashion, so it's improving our community, but there's no cost to us. So it's not like we're losing $1.8 million that we can't use in terms of trying to see if we can allocate a portion of it to somebody or anything. I think it's too late in the year, this year, for anybody to be able to do that and then go out and actually issue the bonds and things like that. It takes quite a while to do that. So I'm completely in favor of allocating these to CHAFPA through the Department of Local Affairs. But Cory, I do have a question, since I work for DOLA, do I need to recuse myself from a vote on this? I don't work for CHAFPA or any of those things I won't personally gain, but I do work for DOLA.
Yeah. Under the city's charter, ultimately, it's your call, but I would suggest the city's charter says financial gain unless you're getting a percentage through your work.
Did you put that in my contract? Okay.
So this is for residential, and is that all of North Glen or just certain areas of North Glen that are eligible?
For income-qualified.
Okay. So we really have to work a hard campaign to make that?
And I believe that, you know, CHAFPA actually does quite a bit of outreach, and they have quite extensive outreach campaign that they do, and they actively try to work that through all the communities.
Thank you.
Leslie? I would just like to say that maybe in the future, I'm all for giving this to residents, don't get me wrong, all for helping them, but in the future, I think maybe with all the redevelopment things that we have going on, we should at least consider this when we talk to a developer, if this might be of help to them, just as a consideration point. So that's...
Yes?
I just want to add that, we did talk about this at a study session, and Brooke did ask for direction from us, and we did direct him to put the money towards the CHAFPA.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm on board since we already directed you to go that way, so.
That is true.
Anyway.
Any other discussion?
Just one, one little comment.
Yes, sir.
As far as I know, we've been making this allocation each year since '07 at least.
At least. Right. Okay. Please open the vote, thank you. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 78 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 79.
A resolution approving an agreement between the city of North Glen and Chester Pool Systems for the Recreation Center Pool Renovation Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
The total amount of this project is, well, $175,000 is the contract, and then there's a contingency that we're recommending that would bring it up to $210,000. The city does have $300,000 of grant money that's been allocated through Adams County Open Space for this project. And so if there's anything that's left over, would be returned back to Adams County, or would not be used.
Discussion? Yes.
Amanda, I know you're going to have to answer this. I get that you're asking for the higher contingency, and I'm on board for that, but what I'm wondering is, is Chester Pool so sure that there won't be more damage to the aluminum shell once they start working?
Let me start with where the process we used. We did an audit with Chester Pool, they came out and did an evaluation on site of the pool and estimated the damage that exists. We can't, as we've said all along, we can't tell that until we remove the liner. So we're using their professional estimate to say that they think it's less than we originally thought. The reason we're asking for the larger contingency is because we don't know what's under that liner until we take it out. Once we take it out, we can't just put it back. We have to make the repairs. So that's our reason for asking for some additional funds there so that we aren't having to come back to you mid-project while the pool is shut down to say we found more damage than we thought we...
And I understand that, I'm just wondering if it's enough. That's...
Oh.
Me, too. It seems like, holy cow, it could really end up being expensive if they find some severe damage that you haven't accounted, that they haven't accounted for, so.
Staff would certainly be open to a larger contingency if you're comfortable with that. It is $150,000 in grant funds and $150,000 in city funds that are currently identified for the project. We'd originally thought this would be closer to $500,000, again, assuming that we'd be replacing more of the shell and assuming we'd be replacing more of the pool deck. And knowing that the council's ultimate goal that we've heard is to replace that sooner than later, we have asked to look at some cost efficiencies there so we can provide a good, safe, functional space for people in the meantime. They say they should provide a ten-to-all-year pool liner, and the deck should match that. We do have the, like I said, we have $300,000 identified. For any dollar we don't use of city funds, we return a dollar to the county because it is a 50-50 grant match.
Okay. Are you comfortable with it as is, with the 20%?
I'm hopeful that we are accurate. I would not be opposed to increasing that contingency to ensure that we're not going to die to in project.
Can I follow up with that? So, John, say, comes back contingency isn't enough, what would be the process to make sure that we continue and get this finished?
Okay. You mean if we continued with a 20% contingency and the amount was going to exceed it?
Correct.
And we'd have to come back to the council for the provisional authorization.
Could you stop work until you came to council and said, okay, can I have more money? I mean, we can't do that, so.
It would depend on where we were at in the project, and if we knew that far enough in advance that we had the time to come to you, or if we had to take more emergency action to get to there.
I'm with Carol on this one. It seems iffy, and I would be really worried about starting the project and getting, you know, quarter of the way through it or halfway and all of a sudden blow up, and then you have to stop work and then come to council and get the additional and, you know, all of that. I wouldn't mind seeing, I mean, I completely appreciate that you're so well under budget on this and what we thought it was going to be, but I just, I would be comfortable with a higher contingency just in case there are some other unforeseen, because you certainly weren't able to get... wasn't, weren't able to get down under there and really look at what was going on under there, so.
So when do you anticipate, what do you think?
Well, I, like I said, best case scenario is they complete it within the budget that was within the contract amount. Um, generally, we've been asking for about a 10% contingency on projects. We've asked for 20. If you would like to go up to the...
Just say it.
As I say, if you would like to go up to the full $300,000 that we have.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
You know what? Because what's the worst that could happen? Is get more back.
Correct. We wouldn't still give anything more, I mean, we'll give as much back as can.
Well, you know, I understand that, but you know what, it's better safe than sorry.
All right.
Well, let's go with the whole.
We don't usually do 100% contingency, but.
Why not? We're gonna set a precedent.
All right, make your, in second, is that good?
Sorry, I'm tired.
Okay, so it could be a friendly then, and then we're good with that? All right, okay.
Just a quick question, I'm not opposed to it or anything, I just was curious, is August 3rd the lead impacted time that the pool would be?
Yes. One swim lesson session is coming to a close, we still have the outdoor pool open, so we're able to provide a pool opportunity for, throughout construction. Um, we may have a week at the end where if weather's iffy that first week of September, um, but our goal is to always be able to provide one of the two pools to the public.
Mayor, and I just want to thank you, Amanda, I don't think I've hid my, my views on putting good money, good money towards bad with this rec center, and so I do appreciate you looking at ways of, of saving money on this pool liner, because, because I've, it's been something I've struggled with, so, thank you. Good job.
All right. Any other discussion?
My one comment is, um, always that, how long is it gonna take and what's the penalty? And the penalty seems weak to me, $250 a day seems light, and, and, um, I think most of our other ones are 500 or 1,000, so I don't see why we couldn't be at least a five. Just makes incentive that someone's saying, oh, $250 a day, I can be a couple days late, no big deal on a big job like that, but, um, if you start adding 500 bucks a day, maybe you're, I mean, the pool's important, so, does that throw anything off or not, is that acceptable?
Since the contractor has already signed it.
Yeah, oh, I'm a no for that, though. I think we need to be a little tougher.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 79 passes with one no vote cast by council member Wayne Dodge.
Thank you. Next to CR 80.
A resolution amending the city of Northland 2015 Personnel Summary.
Move to approve.
Yes, uh, in this case, we've got one recreation assistant person who is working 27 hours a week, and they provide support for both the senior center and the theater. Uh, that person's leaving the position and what we're, are requesting council to do is to increase the number of hours to 40 hours, however, to split that into two separate positions because of the skill set for each is different. So we would have one working part-time position, 20 hours a week, assisting in the senior center, and one, 20 hours a week assisting with the theater.
So I've got a question. What job responsibilities do they have in the senior center? Because I understand they use a lot of volunteers in the senior center to supplement.
Good evening again. We do count on our volunteers to serve many roles, however, the recreation coordinator who's in the senior center is only 32 hours, um, which doesn't cover all of our open time in the facility.
What do they do in the senior center?
So Casey currently fills that position, she, um, assists with programming, um, to a great degree, so anything that's programmed in the afternoon hours, she is, that position is responsible for. They provide support to that volunteer, our goal would be to never leave a volunteer alone in that facility. Um, and we've had that position in place, I believe, for about eight years now. It's worked very well to create those relationships with our senior participants, make sure they always feel like they have a staff person that they can rely on, um, and that can provide them both programming and support while they're at the desk.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes.
John, maybe I'm just, I have an amnesia or something, but was this brought up to us at a study session, this?
No.
This particular one was not.
Okay. I, my preference, and I'm not sure the rest of the councils, I, I would like these to be brought up at study session, I think that they're worth a discussion with us, you know, in, in that setting, rather than just getting brought straight to.
We didn't because of this, because of the small dollar amount of, and it's a relatively small change.
So, so the request is to bring them forward to a study session?
Yeah.
But I would like to add that in defense of having the position in the theater area, um, they definitely have added more programming in there and, you know, they've got a lot more things going on, and I think it definitely warrants having that other person that is just working in that specific division, so I like that they're breaking this apart. I think Casey was going so many which ways, so, I'm on board.
And, and I agree, and I agree, I just think that to have that discussion.
Right, I just wanted the clarification. Okay.
I'd just like to mention that just very recently, we, uh, made a modification partially because of church ditch of the, uh, one employee leaving as a writer or whatever, and now we have it here. I'd like to see a little better planning so that we can have these things in the budget rather than mid-year. If, if there's a change that should be made, let's make it ahead, you know, make that decision, get it in the budget, rather than just wait until something, somebody quits or something else and all of a sudden we do a change. A little more organization, if you would.
Okay.
I think this was just a matter of Casey finishing school and she's going on to bigger and better things and, um, you know, staff trying to work around losing that position. I don't think it was, you know, anything organization-wise they could have seen coming, but now that it's happened, this is a good way to deal with it.
I have no problem with the issue, the, the point is, is that if what we're going to go to is a good idea, it should have been done before and included in the budget.
And we know that our part-time in summer folks do leave, and so I think if we plan ahead, it would be very beneficial for us, so, all right. Any other discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 80 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is communications, and we'll start with Kim.
Um, I don't really have much of anything tonight, except that I did want to, again, thank our residents who came tonight and our businesses for showing up for our meeting, and we actually have six residents who are still here. I mean, I'm gonna applaud you, thank you. So, um, we, we don't get much resident input, so thank you all for being here this evening and sticking out for the whole meeting, and please, we have another chance to speak here in a couple of minutes.
Kim.
I know, it's long, but we have residents, we wanted to speak to us.
I know, I know. We are not that bad.
Yeah, I'm sure I had other things that I was probably going to say, but at 10:15 I'm done.
Thank you.
I just want to commend staff, I thought that, that this was a busy meeting, a busy night, and I think that they did a good job handling it, and, uh, again, echo Kim, I think that it was a, a great conversation and, and good community engagement, so hopefully we can keep the conversation going. Nothing tonight, Mayor?
Oh, I guess not. Okay. Well, the only thing I can say is now we know how to bring our residents to council meetings, right?
I told you for years, threaten them and they show up.
I know, that's true, that's true. I just have one brief announcement, and I just think it's important for folks to know that, uh, the Fast Tracks North Metro team, they're gonna be holding two different, um, meetings to talk about, uh, final station designs. And so the first one is going to be Wednesday, June 17th, at the Commerce City Recreation Center at 5:30, and the second one is Thursday, June 25th, at Margaret Carpenter Recreation Center on Colorado Boulevard at 5:30. So if you're interested in the final design or you want input, um, please attend those meetings.
And I would just like to remind everybody that July 1st will be the beginning of the concert series in the park, and in tandem, that same night is the unveiling of the new sculptures in the park, so please join in on the fun.
Just a couple of things from the fire department, I wanted to let you know that they did have their annual audit, they passed with flying colors, and they also said they thoroughly enjoyed participating in the, um, May Mayhem. They, they said they had a great time with that. Um, wanted to let you know that there is a flag retirement ceremony on the 13th at 11:00 AM, and they're gonna have a, after the ceremony, they're gonna have hot dogs and it'll be at Station 61 in Boomfield. Um, also, just from the school board standpoint, over 2,500 kids graduated from School District 12 over the last three weeks, so they were very proud of that and big accomplishments, so congratulations to all those kiddos. And they also had an audit from the Office of the State Auditor, and they passed that with flying colors, no dings against them, and, uh, out of 178 school districts, about 80 of them did have some kind of a negative ding against them, but they didn't have a single thing. And with that said, I really wanted to thank Debbie and Mura for everything that they do all the time to improve this city and to make things happen here. I know that there were some things that made them sound like they weren't, they weren't great people and doing the right thing, and I just really applaud all the efforts and everything that they do, day in, day out, for, for this city and for the residents of this city. So I just really wanted to go on record saying that.
Good point, good point.
Yes. Mercy.
And this is actually just more of a, I'm wondering if you could clarify something, and you can send it in an email, John, but, um, when Debbie was doing her economic report, she mentioned the 4th of July and that they were waiting to do construction probably at the hospital until after, and I'm just curious, are they gonna block off the area so there's no parking? I just don't want us to get into an issue about people parking in a property we no longer own and the.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Debbie address that, because I wasn't aware that they decided to wait until after.
Just for the record, again, they're gonna be doing some construction there, they'll have all the fences up, all their equipment will be there, they'll be grading, but we had a meeting with all of the tenants over Webster Lake Promenade a week and a half ago, a week and a half, is that about right? Um, and so we talked about, we had, um, Steven there, Steven Stokes, we had the police there, and we talked about access, what streets were gonna be closed off, which ones weren't, signage, to make sure that people weren't gonna be parking in the, you know, Webster Lake Promenade all day, how we were gonna be monitoring that, um, so we felt very good about it, and so did the tenants feel really good about it. We've got some things in place, you know, if they see a car in there that's been there all day, they're, they know what, who they're supposed to call, and that, that, that car can be towed, you know, we don't want them taking up spaces there the whole time. We talked to them about where the parking is gonna be, so as you probably know, Park and Ride, um, Park and Ride has given us the authorization to use the Park and Ride and come in under the tunnel. Um, we have extra space at the Metro North Building, and also the Ramada Parking, um, they've agreed to let us do the Ramada Parking and then, of course, all the Northland Parking. So we felt very good that we've got the lines of communication open with all of them, um, and we're working very diligently on making sure that, um, it works very smoothly for us.
Perfect, great job.
As, as well as all the way up to Boondocks, too, so not just Webster Lake Promenade, but, um, Carrick Bend also, because we don't want them parking, you know, turn there, and we don't want them parking at, at Boondocks either, so we did talk to them about that.
Great, thank you.
Jane?
I have a lot of items to discuss today.
Oh my God, you never do.
Oh, never mind.
I, I do have one thing, can we please finish painting this room?
Yes.
Yeah, what is that?
The facilities department or division is gonna be coming in here at the end of this month with the finished painting room.
The end of the month?
Yeah, that, they had to work it into their schedule, and also have to work with, uh, the availability of the rooms as well.
I'll shut up. Thank you.
Joanna?
Nothing tonight, Mayor?
John?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Cory?
I do, I do have two quick items. I, I'm gonna be providing you a more thorough litigation update, but two, two items that are of, kind of worth mentioning. One is that the Supreme Court on Monday, uh, actually a week from, a week ago, denied cert on Quest's request to review the case in which Northland and Thornton prevailed against Quest, so that case is over.
Great.
To the extent that, um, Quest was saying they paid the wrong entity and that, um, they should get an opportunity to undo that, Supreme Court denied review, case is over. So Northland and Thornton prevailed.
Right.
Um, and then in the case, um, the marijuana sales tax challenge against Adams County, um, the matter's been set for a, a full day hearing on June 22nd, 9:00 AM in the Adams County District Court, uh, so the four plaintiffs will be proceeding that morning against Adams County, and, um, we'll, of course, update you as soon as we know more.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next we have publics invited to be heard, and we have public, would you like to come up and talk to us? No? Come on, come on, we're waiting.
Think they've had enough talking tonight.
Mayor, I, I forgot, I had a question earlier from a participant in our audience about when the chicken hearings were.
Oh.